Good evening Wakefield. Welcome to the Wakefield Town Council meeting of Monday, March 11th, 2024. I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Ask my colleagues to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attendance today. I have six councilors in attendance, everyone except for Councillor Danahy, who will be joining us online a little bit later in the meeting. Item number four is a possible executive session to discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation under General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3. Because an open session may have detrimental effects on the bargaining position of the town, we do have the intent of returning to open session immediately thereafter. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Councillor Dubrowski?
Aye.
Councillor Butt?
Yes.
Vice Chair McLean?
Aye.
Councillor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Councillor Vincent?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries 6-0. So we will return to open session shortly. Oh, okay, we are back. All right. Good evening again, Wakefield. We are back from executive session into open session. We're going to move the agenda around a little bit. We have a brief agenda item number six that we'll cover before we do public engagement. And so I'm pleased to welcome some guests here from the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, and we'll turn it over to you guys if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and telling us why you're here.
Great, thank you so much. My name is -- good evening, everyone. Thanks for inviting us here. My name is TJ White. I'm the Vice President of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, which most people know as TSF of Wakefield. TSF of Wakefield is a registered 501(c)(3) organization that was formed in 1960. And over the past 64 years, TSF has provided 12,780 financial awards to Wakefield students by assisting them in the pursuit of obtaining a higher education. There are currently 613 active funds, and it's an honor that the community has entrusted our group to invest in our students while honoring the legacies of the individuals, families, the families, the businesses, and organizations that created the 613 active funds. Now, before I go any further, I'm going to ask the Town Council members a question. This past November, Joe, here, was at, we were at a meeting, and I asked all the student directors to see if they knew how much money the TSF gives out on an annual basis. I also gave out cookies to any of the students that got the answers right. So today, I'm going to ask the committee members if they know how much money TSF gave out in 2023, and whoever guesses the closest can have two thin mint cookies. Any guesses as to how much we give out on an annual basis? Any? What's that?
Two million.
Oh, we wish. No, can't do that, not that much.
Maybe it was aggregated.
Two hundred and seventy-five.
Eight hundred thousand.
Five hundred and eighty thousand.
I'm just going to tell you right now, eight hundred thousand is the correct answer. Mr. Kynes gets eight hundred, gets two cookies. He doesn't get the eight hundred thousand.
I'm going to donate my cookies to my colleague who's breaking her fast.
And these are really great. So in 2023, TSF provided $800,000 in awards, bringing the total monetary fund provided to Wakefield students since 1960 to over $16.3 million inception to date, with a projection to go over $17 million after the 2024 scholarships are handed out, which to me is pretty amazing. So for the students, as long as the requirements are met, the average award size is roughly $3,000, with some awards being higher or lower depending on the family resources. It takes 20 minutes or so to complete an online application and to submit it. And it's amazing the bargain that you get. 20 minutes for roughly $3,000 is a great bargain. The new FASF reforms have been created, have created an application timing issue this year, as it did with a lot of colleges and universities. So we're still waiting for FASF to be released before we can open up the TSF application, but hopefully by the end of this month, we'll be all done. This Saturday, March 16th, we are going to hold our 44th Annual Appeal Fundraiser. As Vice President, I serve as chairperson for the event, and last year, the fundraiser raised over $42,000. The kids did awesome. Last year, there were 289 scholarships awarded, and we're constantly reviewing our abilities to reach out to more students and have them apply for scholarships. For example, we're using social media more than in prior years to reach the students, such as Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, et cetera. We notice every time we use donations, we use the social media, our donations have increased, so that's just different ways for us to do more fundraising to benefit the students of Wakefield. Some of you guys have attended our past fundraising events, such as the annual golf tournament at Bear Hill, or our recent trivia night over at the Elks. They're always fun, and we appreciate everyone that comes out to support our cause. As I just mentioned, on Saturday, March 16th, we'll hold our 44th Annual Appeal. Similar to last year, the annual appeal will be targeting mailing again, and will include a flyer at the March Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department bills. And includes, the flyer includes important information about our organization, and the mailing will be sent to many Wakefield residents, including new residents and past supporters. We'll also be spreading the word about TSF on social media, and hope you follow us that day on Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn. Helping us out again this year is a great group of high school students who serve as the TSF student directors. They not only benefit from this fundraiser, but they're also helping all future generations' students who are following in their footsteps to keep this fundraiser going and our nonprofit going. We're grateful to have them help us out again, as they're really great kids, and they take their job very seriously. I'd like to introduce Joseph Pat, President of the TSF Student Directors, who will talk a little bit more about the annual appeal.
Thank you, Mr. White. I am Joseph Pat, and I am the current President of the Student Directors of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield. This Saturday, March 16th, we expect to have our 30 TSF student directors on social media sharing information about the TSF Annual Appeal Fundraiser. Throughout the event, each hour, we will be sharing posts with updates and facts about TSF. We will gather at the Civic Center to assemble the annual appeal mailing, which will include information about TSF, as well as the details about how to donate to this great cause. We hope that everyone will respond favorably to our most important fundraiser of the entire year, and we hope to be able to surpass the $42,000 that we raised at last year's event. On behalf of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, I would like to ask the Town Council to endorse the TSF Annual Appeal Fundraiser, and we will also ask that you please designate the week of March 10th through March 16th as the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield Annual Appeal Week in Wakefield. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion or anything else, TJ? Sorry, to cut you off, anything?
No, I, we look forward to this every year, coming here, and this was an added bonus to have these amazing students here, these amazing people behind me. So I was thrilled to see them all. I wish you guys the best. I decided to go visit your cafe. So besides that, no, for the TSF perspective, no. Thank you very much for having us here this evening.
And this week, for those of us who are looking to make donations?
You can always go on the website, which is always great, tsfofakefield.com. And then we'll also be sending out, just check your mailers when you get it from the Gas and Light Department. You're going to get a whole flyer that we created last year, and it's got all of the information you're going to need, and there'll be one of the barcodes type things that you can scan on your phone. What's that?
QR code.
Thank you. I need people like him to keep me going. QR code to keep it all, you know, very simple and very easy. So you'll be able to see that as well. But it's all on the website, and it's a great organization. I'm very proud to be working with.
Absolutely. No, and it's amazing, I mean, you look at the scope of what the Scholarship Foundation's been able to do over 60-plus years.
It is pretty amazing.
You know, 16-plus million dollars, you know, closing in on 17 million is incredible.
Seventeen million, yeah.
And what a legacy for the students of Wakefield.
Yes, yes.
Any discussion from the council before we move to a vote on the motion?
Just want to say the golf this year was a little wet.
It was very wet.
Why don't you guys take care of that this year?
I'll try, figure that out next year, yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
It was, it was very wet this year.
I don't think we got an update of how Steve and Jonathan's team did at the trivia night.
Oh.
My team actually did better than I thought it was going to. We made it to the next round.
Steve did stay for the last, stay for the last round.
Stayed for the last round, which was unlikely, I thought.
We were in the lead until the, or close to the lead until the last round, which did us in. We had some bad luck with those questions, so.
Well, Mr. Cool Kelly does a great job. He does a great job of creating those. I don't know how he does it. And we were down to a team of three, so we should have got some bonus points.
Any other comments or discussion? No? All right, we'll take a vote on the motion to declare this week the Annual Appeal Week and March 16th the Annual Appeal Day. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations on what I know will be a successful fundraiser this year. We're rooting for you, we'll be there for you.
Really appreciate it.
Congratulations, Joe, on a great track season as well.
Yes.
To you and your teammates. Exciting to see you guys do so well this winter, and we'll be looking out for our mail this week.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time and your help with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Have a great day, have a great night, great scene, and here are your cookies. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ben.
All right, we'll skip back to item number four, public engagement. I've got four people signed up. We'd like to start with Marie Ray, if you wouldn't mind coming up. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself, stating your address, and we'd ask you to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Thank you. Marie Ray, 25 Montclair Avenue. Most of you in Town Council know me and my role as advocate for the disability community, including as Vice Chair of Wakefield's Commission on Disabilities. My passion is personal, as I am also the parent of a 27-year-old son, Daniel, who also has Down Syndrome. Over these many years, the town of Wakefield, particularly the school department, has been a willing partner with me in providing the best education possible for those who are differently abled. And many hours of collaboration with the school department resulted in the establishment of Post Academy. Post Academy continues to thrive, and the students from Wakefield and surrounding communities continue to benefit from the unique opportunities it offers. I come before the town of Wakefield once again to ask for your support, specifically for an allocation of $150,000 from the town's remaining ARPA funding for the build-out and retrofit of the space at 411 Main Street in Wakefield for another endeavor, Inspire Cafe. Inspire Cafe is a venture of the Boys and Girls Club of Wakefield in Stonem, in collaboration with the Friends of Inspire Cafe. I personally am truly grateful to Anthony Guardia and Adam Rogers of the Boys and Girls Club for their willingness to help make this vision a reality. The unemployment rate for those with intellectual and developmental disabilities is over 80%. This staggering statistic highlights the need for better employment opportunities and support for this population. The Boys and Girls Club will use this enterprise to provide meaningful employment opportunities for individuals with diverse abilities, setting an example for other Wakefield businesses to follow. Many of Inspire's staff, Cafe staff, who are here tonight, are residents of Wakefield and surrounding towns. By providing these individuals employment, the staff, including my son, Dan, and the others, who will come after him, will have an opportunity to work and continue to thrive in Wakefield community, where the town's mission is to embrace diversity, encourage inclusiveness, and build a sense of belonging, both in the workplace and the community. I look forward to your continued support and your favorable response.
Thank you so much. And thank you for everything that you do here in the community as well.
It's my pleasure.
On the Commission on Disabilities, it's great to have your advocacy and your efforts here.
Thank you.
I know, Marie, you had a couple of other people that signed up with you. Do we have anyone else?
Yes, so I'd like to introduce Janice Mamayak. She is the Chair of the Friends of Inspire Cafe. She is also the architect on our project.
All right. Janice, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself again, telling us your address, and please go ahead.
Certainly. Good evening, and thank you for having us here to tell you our story. My name's Janice Mamayak, 30 Trenton Street in Melrose, Mass. As Marie said, I'm the Chair of the Friends of Inspire Cafe, also the architect, leading the design of the cafe, and most importantly, parent of Whitman, one of our Inspire staff. On behalf of the Board of Friends of Inspire Cafe, we request your support of our efforts to bring to reality what was just a dream a mere year ago, almost to this week, when the coffee shop down the street closed. At that time, we weren't ready to let it go, the idea that our guys were part of something big. It was something that was challenging the way inclusion was defined. It was spreading awareness of different abilities, and it was giving an environment where others were welcomed into their world, their reality. So we rallied amongst ourselves, and now we have a group of committed individuals that include lawyers, architects, CFOs, marketing executives, social workers, our dedicated staff and employees, and more. We've officially become a corporation within the Commonwealth, and our 501(c)(3) status, nonprofit status, is pending. I'm honored to be working with this group alongside the Boys and Girls Club and the leadership with Anthony Guardia, who's here tonight, and Adam Rogers, in dedicating to set up this new community-based nonprofit model focused on locally sourced products and a mission-centric environment of inclusion. Our summer pop-up and on-the-go events continue to get very successful feedback and well-received by the community. Our guys are working at the Stonem Theater and Town Hall and private events throughout Wakefield and neighboring towns. We're grateful to the town of Wakefield and our adjacent communities for this support in bridging the gap of employment for these individuals with ADD, as Marie has mentioned. Our initial steps in this journey have seen continued progress, and we look to welcome you all in our permanent home soon. So in that regard, over the last nine months, we've expended much due diligence in looking for our home. It needed to be accessible, it needed to be affordable, and it needed to be available. We looked at many, many, many possibilities in Wakefield and surrounding communities, all wrought with challenges, but we believe now we have found that AAA location and are working toward this reality. Our team has training every Tuesday night as they learn about client service and food service. Our on-the-go events, as I mentioned, continue. We're servicing the Stonem Theater and the concessions, we're doing town halls and many private events. As the architect, our construction and design plans are continuing. I had a team of engineers in the space last Thursday, working through mechanicals, electrical, and plumbing. Our menu and operations are being refined with a seasoned cafe manager, and our marketing campaign is under contract with the aim for a spring launch.
Janice, if I could just ask you to wrap it up in a moment?
Your assistance in helping us get to where we want to be is why we're here tonight, and we thank you in advance for your support.
Thank you so much. I think we also had Alana Russo.
Yes.
So please con one up. If you wouldn't mind telling us who you are, and please go ahead.
Hello. Hello, Wakefield Town Council. My name is Alana Russo. I live independently on my own in Bedford, Mass. I have a learning disability, mild cerebral palsy, and I am hearing impaired in both ears. I used to work at a coffee shop in Melrose called Biddy &amp; Bowls. Biddy &amp; Bowls hires people like me who have disabilities and want to work. When I found out that they were coming to Massachusetts, I went for an interview, and out of 100 applicants, I was one of the several people who were hired to be a drinkmaker. When I found out the shop went out of business, my fellow coworkers and I were so upset and were left without a job. I'm not sure if you know that people with disabilities have the highest unemployment rate in the country. Sure, I could go work at TJ Maxx, but I would be stuck in the back room, or even worse, not even feel like a number of the team. I was so happy when my former coworkers and myself, with some much-needed help from the Boys and Girls Club of Wakefield, came, came, came up with a plan to get us and people like us back to work. I am here tonight to talk about my new journey, working for Inspire Cafe. I started last July, serving slush at our pop-up stand in Wakefield Center, and working with the Boston stage company Stonem Theater, and handing out hot, hot coffee and hot chocolate before and after the show to raise money for our new shop in Wakefield. At Inspire, I feel accepted. I am a member of the community. I am seen and can shine through, through my abilities rather than my disability. I was so happy to read your Town of Wakefield mission statement, and I'll quote part of it. As one, we strive to engender a culture that embraces diversity and encourages inclusiveness and builds a profound sense of belonging both in the workplace and the community. So you can understand why this grant is so important to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Alana. We appreciate you speaking tonight.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Anthony Guardia. All right, Mr. Guardia, you know, you know the drill?
Sounds good. I'm just going to need an hour and a half, and I'll be done.
Three minutes.
That sounds good. Anthony Guardia, it's like town meeting. Anthony Guardia, 27 Davie Lane. So I'd like to start by thanking Ann Danny, who I don't think is here tonight, but I don't know if she's on Zoom, but to give her credit where credit's due, this idea started when she reached out to Marie and had mentioned the potential of ARPA funds. So Ann, if you are watching, thank you for getting this process started. But I want to encourage this council to fully fund the request to open the Inspire Cafe, and I want to stress the expediency necessary for this project to be successful. In brief, for what amounts to about $15,000 a year, the town would guarantee an anchor economic driver at the start of our downtown. The Boys and Girls Clubs of Stonem and Wakefield is guaranteeing the programming and the staffing. Christopher Senna from Middlesex Investment Partners, his company is guaranteeing investments of over $1 million to upgrade the facility, including the entire second floor to turn it into offices. The soon-to-be Friends of Inspire Cafe, joined with us tonight, is already a nonprofit, or quickly on their way to becoming a nonprofit, like the Friends of the Library, to support with ancillary fundraising efforts specifically for this initiative. But I'd be remiss tonight if I did not mention already Janice Mamayak. Janice is right behind me. She is the Director of Architecture, Vice President and Principal at Icon Architecture in Boston, and she has made sure that this project, to borrow a term from federal government grants, is shovel-ready. In brief, the largest social service agency in Wakefield is ready to provide the staffing and funding for the daily programming. The developer is ready to give below-market terms and invest over $1 million in town. And finally, a significant percentage of parents and families in Wakefield have pledged their support to this cause. All we need is a one-time investment from this town, from ARPA funds, to help open this cafe in the late spring of 2024, at the latest, the early summer of 2024. This would be a 10-year lease that goes to 2034. However, the one stress I have to make is that this commitment can only be made for so long, simply because other tenants have expressed interest in the property, and we can only ask the landlord, I spoke to him today, to keep it open for us for so long. So he has been very generous and very kind, but he has asked me to stress the expediency of needing to make a decision on this. I do want to end by thanking all of you. I think the best part of local government and being involved in local government is being able to point to things and say, because of me, X happened. And I think everybody watching tonight, everybody here tonight, should know that they have a Town Council where, even if you don't always agree on everything, every single one of you can point to something in Wakefield and say, I have made the lives of this community better because I have served on the Town Council. So I hope this is another accomplishment you can add to that. And if this doesn't go through, dodgeball is in May, and we can have you play. Thank you so much, thank you for the work you do.
Thank you, Anthony. And the dodgeball thing seems to be a little bit of a threat there.
Oh, he's not kidding.
I think Julie has the injury, lingering injury to show for it.
They figured it proven.
As our Lord, we're.
Thank you, Anthony. We did also have a written comment that was submitted from Catherine Han of Fairmont Street in Wakefield, also expressing support for funding for Inspire Cafe. Next up for public participation, we have Theo Knoll. Sherry, I don't know if Theo is online?
He was here.
Oh, he is here.
No, he was going to be in person.
He's coming in.
Okay. All right, bear with us just a moment. We hear his footsteps. Thank you, Theo. Have a seat, and whenever you're ready, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself with your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes.
Fantastic. Good evening, my name's Theo Knoll. I live at Eight Fernwood Road, and I'm speaking to you tonight as a town member and not a representative of the planning board, of which I am a town-elected board member and its current chair. I want to speak really quickly to two items that are before you tonight. First, I support the bike-ped plan because it gives us vision, orientation, and direction for how to make our streets and our sidewalks safer and more accommodating to everyone. It also sets the stage for more ways to address our horrible car traffic and congestion problems, which are among the most cited problems in town. It's going to give us the tools to plan and engineer our streets so that our schoolchildren, pedestrians, cyclists, folks walking their dogs, and those of us using wheelchairs or other mobility assist devices are able to get around town. or other mobility assist devices are able to get around town. What I really like most about it is that it gives us goals and techniques. These are supported through our Vision 2030 and our master plan process. This is a Wakefield-generated, Wakefield-inspired plan, and it puts people first. The second item I want to speak to you is regarding the citizens' petition concerning the multifamily overlay district related to MBTA communities. I really do respect the interest and attention given to this by the council, all the town members, and the town staff regarding all of the implications of the overlay district. Again, I'm speaking as a town member, not as a member of the planning board. It's really important for the town to be practical and proactive, to take advantage of a new zoning tool, a new zoning opportunity that we're given in order to look ahead towards our future and towards new opportunities for Wakefield. As we've talked about, the plan, the district that's in the warrant is really about supporting downtown Wakefield. It's about finding ways of mitigating car traffic and responding to changing demographics and changing housing demand choices. So we're talking about increasing the supply in ways that will respond to future residents and future housing needs. It also, by expanding our supply, will help mitigate the affordability problems that we see, both for existing homeowners, future home buyers, and current and future renters. The petition, the citizens' petition, really negates the utility of the district that's in the warrant. And again, because the central opposition to the MBTA community's overlay district really is around traffic and congestion, the citizens' petition, by allowing cars to increase from 1.5 cars per unit to two cars for a three- and four-bedroom unit, is only going to make congestion worse. It's going to add more cars to our streets, making them unsafer, which is precisely the central purpose that the Bike Plan Ped is here to redress.
Mr. Knoll, you're able to wrap up?
Nope, that's it for me. I really appreciate, again, everything that the council does and your leadership, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your work on the planning board as well.
Can I just ask a follow-up question on that?
Briefly.
Okay. Mr. Knoll, thank you for that. I know you said that the three- and four-bedrooms are asking for two cars at minimum. Isn't that currently the case?
No. So with the new district, the Traffic Advisory Committee recommended that we adopt 1.5 cars per unit.
I'm not referring to adopting. I'm saying what currently would be expected of three- and four-bedroom units. It is two vehicles and one and a half for one and two bedrooms currently. Isn't that right?
Okay.
Right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Hey, do we have anyone else for public participation? No? Sherry, no one online?
No, you are all set.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you to everyone who engaged with us this evening. We'll move on to item number seven, fiscal year 2025 budgets. Kicking off with budget number 17, the fire department. And I know we've got a little bit of a transition in the room right now, so we'll give folks a chance to move around and for folks to come online. Thank you, everyone, again, for coming tonight. All right, Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening.
All right, we're gonna start with fire. So Chief and Deputy, if you guys wouldn't mind taking a seat, and Kevin, you're. Yep, come on up to the table, please. No worries. And Sherry, do we have Mr. Hogan online or anyone else from FinCom?
No, we do not.
Okay. I don't know if that's you, Jim, for. Okay. Kevin, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Councilmembers. First budget we'll hear tonight is the Fire Department Budget, fiscal '25. We're recommending that the fire budget be increased $748,637 over the current fiscal year. The increase in personal services is $737,637. The reason for this increase? In fiscal '24, the SAFER grant is ending. In fiscal '24, there was approximately a $300,000 offset to this budget for the SAFER grant. We no longer have that in fiscal '25, so we need to include that in the budget for next year. We also have raises for the Chief and Deputy Chief, the total $9,490. We increased the overtime line item by $50,000 based on both current and prior year expenses. We included a physical fitness stipend for $45,000, which will be new next year. The balance is $335,947 is for the settlement of the union contract, which also includes step increases. Under contractual services, the total increase was $8,000. We increased the auto maintenance line item $5,000. In radio maintenance, $3,000, both due to increased costs. And under materials and supplies, the total increase was $3,000. And that was all for motor vehicle parts, which also is due to higher costs. Total budget request for fiscal '25 is $7,466,154. Just one thing with regards to this fiscal year. We will need some type of either a supplemental appropriation or a reserve fund transfer to finish our fiscal.
Due to overtime, I assume?
Yes.
Yep.
Chief, Deputy, can we ask you to weigh in?
Well, I mean, Kevin had said it pretty much already that the SAFER grant actually expires March 10th of this year. So three years ago, the town was kind enough to allow us to apply for that grant. And basically, in the interim, in the last three years, we've hired four firefighters, and we've managed to pay most of their salary and benefits for three years. So before the SAFER grant, we had 51 members. After the SAFER grant, we had 55. And it was made, you know, clear at the time that we applied for the grant that at the end, it's going to be on the town to pick up the four positions. So, you know, that's a good chunk of the increase. We're also, fiscal year '25 is also the start of the second year of a contract, not the first year. So we have some increases that have been shown in this year, which are going to probably be reflected in the supplemental that Kevin just asked for. And the second year of it will start on July 1st. And obviously, with any negotiated contract, you have salary raises and changes to certain benefits and stipends and so forth that all affect the budget. The non-personnel part of it is pretty minor. Everything's more expensive. You kind of get worked on. It just costs more money. The parts cost more money. The labor costs more money. That's where a lot of our increases are, and it's not very much money. The money's in the personal services. Did you have any? I know you had some concerns.
I know. I did ask through Mr. Mayo. Do you have any sort of data that we could kind of understand in terms of utilization? I know we get the number of calls each year, but I'd love to be able to dig in, you know, as we talk through the budget, things like, you know, how have response times changed? How has the balance of calls changed? You know, how often are we relying on mutual aid for different emergencies? I think just to try to put some color around the activity that we're seeing beyond just sort of the top-line number of calls.
All right, so we'll switch off. I'll let you. So let's start off with the number of incidents, okay? Our emergency responses had a significant increase about two years ago, almost 10%. And that was about, the timing of that was about the same as some of these large apartment complexes were opening and starting to be occupied. Plus, a big part of that was the opening of Brightview, which is a 130-bed facility. That all by itself, Brightview, increases our response significantly. It's just, that's not a criticism of Brightview. It's just the way it is. It's due to the nature of the population. And in some ways, it makes it a lot easier for the department because a lot of the people that would be going to these small houses with very tiny stairwells and having to deal with trying to get them out, where we don't have to worry about that anymore because we have elevators and wide stairways and so forth. So that 300 to 400 call increase was a pretty substantial. We did 4325 this year. Last year was our all-time high. We did 4387. And I do not see that going down again next year. We have at least six large complexes that are being built. And even if they only generate, you know, a couple dozen calls apiece, it's just gonna continue to creep up. I think that 300 to 400 call increase you saw was kind of an adjustment because COVID slowed everything down and it took a lot longer for things to become fully completed and fully occupied and so forth. So we are definitely creeping up on.
Pause for a second. You mentioned Brightview specifically. When you talk about 300, 400 to 400 calls, is that just Brightview or is that sort of?
No, that's all together.
Okay.
But you'll probably account for at least half of that increase to Brightview.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
It's not a criticism of the facility in any way, shape, or form. So our run count's going up, which is putting a strain on our services because we operate three major pieces of apparatus, two engine companies and a Lada company. And we've established districts. Obviously, Greenwood has its own district, but like Ninja One has its own district, Lada One has its own district. And we're trying to divvy out the amount of calls that each of the three companies is responding to. And what we're finding is that the, one of the questions you asked was over the last five years, how is the response time there? And despite the 10% growth in the calls, we're still getting to calls in about three minutes. Now, that doesn't count dispatch time. You have to add probably another minute to two minutes on top of that. But that's still not bad. There are certain areas of town, Autobahn Road, Walton Street area, where you may have to add another minute to two minutes on top of that. But it's certainly not an alarming response time. You know, but again, that's gonna get, the busier we get, the harder it's gonna be to keep that. One thing that I would like to notice, I would like to mention is that you had asked about, I forget the term you used, but the amount of calls that we get at the same time. And I was kind of stunned by that. We never really tracked that, other than the fact that, boy, we get a lot of calls at the same time. It's 30%, 30% of our calls. You know, and what I mean by that is we get a call for medical aid, and just as that engine's pulling out of the door, the phone rings again, and you get another call. And that can, sometimes that can go on, we can get three or four calls in a row. And then that gets kind of hairy because we only run three pieces of apparatus. So you kind of have to, like, you know, divert this ambulance to that call and so forth. But that's definitely not gonna get better as time goes on. And the 30% has been, it might have started out at like 25% three or four years ago. It creeps up a little every year, so it's not heading in the right direction. The. You know what? I'll let you do the average on scene. You asked about the amount of time that we spend on scene.
Yep.
On the average. And you have to understand that we respond to a great many different varieties of calls. And both Jeppity and Lieutenant Silva had put a lot of time into this. That's why I.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. The average time on scene has gone up incrementally since 2020. Five-year average, not including this year because it's the first quarter, but about 14 minutes on scene. But the last two years, 1452, and so far this year, 1539. You know, getting to these buildings, going up the five stories, getting in the elevators, administering patient care, getting them down into the elevators. I mean, we have a lot of other calls, but a lot of medical aids. And I think these, you know, these new structures with the commercial first and second floor, residential two, three, four, and five, it's taken a lot more time. And I concur with the chief. We ran a lot of these numbers. The overlapping calls is a big concern. 28.83% in '23. It's already started out about the same, 29% in 2022. That's three out of every 10 calls we go out the door. We beat the ambulance in almost every time. And EMS is short-staffed. The world is short-staffed with EMS. So mutual aid is eight to 10 minutes away easily if we call them. It's just, so we're starting to see an effect in customer service, no question. And it runs our people a lot harder. Average runs a day are between 11 and 12, you know. But they're there longer, so you might say, well, 24 hours, you're running 12 runs. Sometimes they do 18, but you're there a lot longer. So it affects everything. We have the mutual aid runs. We've cut everything that you might need. But the bottom line is, it's just a busier department. No one likes to hear me say the city of Wakefield's running a town fire department, and a good one, a very good one. It's, I'm in the buildings. I'm tasked with being in the new buildings and the new construction with Captain Dave Shinney. We're sitting on the boards, the plans, the pre-plans, the construction. I mean, we're constantly there, and it's a lot. There's 300, 400 units on Salem Street alone. The head of the leg, it's just gonna grow. So we're here to do our jobs, and we wouldn't be doing them if we weren't telling you that it's growing and it's busy.
Last year, we sent mutual aid out of town 44 times. We received it 94 times. And there's a big reason for the discrepancy. For incoming mutual aid, I count the fire department ambulances that come into town. We have a lot of incidents up on the highway. A lot of times, Lynnfield Fire will be available before Catalo is, if we got swamped with a lot of medical calls. Reading Fire, Melrose Fire, all of those add up. If we do like two or three of those a month, it definitely skews the mutual aid. The mutual aid we're sending out is, we don't have an ambulance service, so we're sending out fire, basically fire suppression mutual aid. And that's what that is. That's, it's getting worse in terms of what, we're getting more in than we are sending out. But I think, to be honest with you, I think we're also tracking it better because of the ambulance crisis, you know, and not being able to get enough units and not being able to get enough help. And just for our own personal benefit, we're trying to track that, to see how bad it is.
One thing I'd like to touch on real quick is, although the average response time is two minutes 50 seconds, I will be very clear in saying anything beyond the unit circle area. Autobahn Road, it's a six-minute shot, period. I've timed it three ways to Sunday. It's six minutes, and it's growing, as I mentioned, Salem Street. We just can't get there, and under six minutes. And Engine Two, it's about eight minutes. So these are our lead pieces, and when they're committed down there, and then we get a call on West Park Drive, you know, you're talking about a big difference. And we have to commit all companies to the larger buildings down there. So if it's a box of. So if it's a box assignment, I have two engines and a ladder truck there, there's no one left. The shift commander has to break somebody off, Engine Two, you free to take the medical back in Greenwood or, you know, and we have to coordinate with the ambulance service. We're really upgrading and stepping up the software to track this stuff, but you don't even need it. You can just tell from day to day operations, you know, the workflow.
Well, I am glad to hear that you are stepping up the software. I mean, I I would love to see a view of these data sort of more regularly because I think, you know, we obviously are seeing a lot of growth in the community. And, you know, I think to be able to, you know, understand in a data driven way, you know, what those demands are on the department, I think is gonna be really important for us as we think about kind of long term fiscal decisions, you know, with regard to staffing and equipment and things like that. And so I really, I mean, obviously, I appreciate everything that you and your department are doing every day, but, you know, being able to dig into the data a little bit and hopefully being able to dig into that more regularly and have that be part of the reporting that you're putting together, I think is really helpful and really illuminating for for the discussion that we're having.
We could certainly add this data to like, for instance, our annual report.
That would be phenomenal.
You know, it's it's now that we now that we sort of determined how to get that information, we was a project.
We have quite a bit of stuff now that I can email to you. I just don't want to overwhelm you with the.
Don't be worried about overwhelming me. I'll say uncle if I need to, but I would personally love to see it and just start to think about with you guys as well, you know, what are we seeing in terms of the mix of calls and what that means in terms of, you know, time on scene and so forth? Because I think there is a lot of nuance in it. You mentioned with kind of the mutual aid calls, you know, the fact that we don't have an ambulance service means we have to interpret that a little bit differently. I think there's a lot of rich information there that, you know, I would love to be more steeped in, and I think as a council, it would be helpful for us all to be.
Agreed. Yeah, I will tell you one thing. The chief and I talked about this earlier. When we negotiated the 11th firefighter, and I know that that's a big jump, having to take that whole thing on after the grant graduated, the foresight from Administrator Mayo is not something that's easily, you know, missed on us. That was a big thing. He stepped up, but it wasn't just, okay, we're gonna give it to you. There was a lot of thought that went into it. The chief knew was on the on the fence on it and said, you know, this is gonna be a big step, but we needed it. It saved us in COVID with all these bills. We would be so far behind the eight ball right now if we didn't have that 11th firefighter. I can tell you that it is well worth it. And that's just not a thank you to Steve. That was a big deal, which is, you know, why he's the head guy. That's that helps our department immensely. Very big fire the other day in Linfield. Come and watch the people in action and see how quick our resources go to work on the fire ground or on any type of emergency, a rollover, a highway, even a medical aid. We're committing so many people, it's just a different world out there. So we appreciate the support.
Thank you. And I think I've used the term before, the choreography that goes into the work that you do is really incredible, and I think it gets lost on people. So I really value the the leadership that both of you provide as well in the in the work of everyone on the on the team. Other questions, comments, or discussion from the council? Counsel Dobrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief and Kevin for this really informative presentation. Few questions I have. One really, I know that the the safer grant is now extinguished, no pun intended. Are there other opportunities that we're seeing off on the horizon that may be able to to substitute for that going forward? Or, you know, how are other communities dealing with that?
Well, the safer program isn't isn't itself isn't defined.
Right, just but the grant itself, right.
We've benefited from three safer grants since I've been chief. One of them initiated by my predecessor, Dave Parr. And the program is still alive and well. But I mean, the thing is, you have to have, you have to be able to plan for the resources at the other end of it. This last grant that we got was extremely rare because it paid for 100% of the salary and benefits. And that had never been done before. And I think what was happening was fire departments, they couldn't apply for the safer grant. They couldn't they couldn't commit to the local aid aid part of it. And the federal government stepped up and said, okay, well, for maybe just this once, we'll 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 experiment with 100% reimbursement. But I mean, that that program is still available. Just I pointed out, that's the only staffing one that I'm aware of for from the feds. And that's nothing, there's no staffing grants available from the from the state.
So are we able to then reapply for that grant again in some iteration of it or some iteration of it or?
Well, yes, the short answer is yes, you can.
Okay.
You have to, you know, it's you have to do a lot of thinking behind it because there's a lot, there's a large financial obligation at the other end. And you have to be able to understand that and accept it. In fact, they won't they won't process your application unless you get a written letter from the town government saying that they'll, you know, they understand what the local contribution is and also the fact that they're gonna be on the hook for the whole thing when they're done.
Can I just ask, just to clarify on that question? Can we apply for the safer grant for existing staff or only if we're talking incremental new firefighters?
It's designed to bring new.
Okay.
Increase the department. There are like similar programs like volunteer departments or paid part call where, you know, they may be they might spend more of their resources towards recruiting and stuff like that. But no, it's designed to to expand the services that a department officer, increase the size of it.
Thank you, sorry, Counsel. I just wanted to make sure we clarified that.
It's basic seed money to be able to stop your position.
Yes, yeah. I mean, the way it was written, we asked for the for the safer grant to supply a third person for the ladder truck. That's what we were looking for. And, you know, and our justification was was to increase the overall amount of firefighters that are showing up. Everything's fire based with with, you know, the fire department grant system. I mean, they understand that we do a whole bunch of other things, but they want to know how are you increasing your mission to efficiently put out, you know, fires? And it's kind of almost common sense that the more firefighters you can get at the first alarm, the safer everybody is and the more efficient they operate and so forth. So that's sort of what it was geared to. It wasn't so much as increasing the number of people in the ladder truck as it was bringing increasing the total number of firefighters that are gonna arrive within a certain number of minutes at a scene. And we were counting one mutual aid company that would start. The way we have our system set up is when, if we have anything, any kind of a fire on on site, we automatically start a mutual aid company, even if they don't strike a second alarm, just to get extra help on the way. And they were counting that as our first alarm force. The magic number was to get it up over 15. And and this grant helped do that.
The other other thing I noticed is you had mentioned that we, I know we have three apparatus companies currently. How long have we had three apparatus companies? I mean, it's been decades, right?
Yes, yeah.
And I think it I think it's important because for context or perspective, our population has grown by 10% from 2010 to 2020. So when you think about that, we're at about 25,000 now, we're about 27 and change, you know, give or take. And so I think about that from the perspective of like, you had raised just sheer number of additional people that are in our town. And then you mentioned the hundreds upon hundreds of units in various enclaves. And I'm really concerned that we don't have the apparatus to support us going forward at the same rate of development that we're seeing. And I am especially struck by the fact that so much of this development is on, I'll say, the west side of the tracks, Tarrant Lane, several hundred, several hundred there, Grayson Lofts, and all of Foundry Street. Those are all the buildings, Deputy Chief, that you had mentioned. They're taller, they have greater density. This 40A, no matter how it ends up being, will mean a lot more potential development, again, on the west side of the tracks. So in the aggregate there, it really concerns me that we don't have any apparatus on that side, keeping in mind that we have a commuter rail that comes through with some regularity, you know? And so I it's not a question for this budget, but more a question of thinking from a capital perspective, but also a strategic planning perspective. Do we need to think more, and I know I've raised this before, but do we need to think more about treatment of the west side as that is more representative of a larger share of our population? And we don't have, we don't have any apparatus there.
Yeah, one good thing about the west side is that, say, like 25 years ago, there used to be a lot of freight trains or lawn lawn trains that came through Wakefield. And they would have the effect of of basically bisecting the town for a brief a brief period of time. Those seem to have gone by the wayside. They must they must get on some other railroad track because I haven't really seen much of that in the last 15 or 20 years. I'm actually more concerned about the the other end of town, Autobahn Road, Walton Street, that neighborhood there. There's also a lot of heavy construction going on there. There's actually, if you if you think about it and you compare both sides of the town, there's actually a lot more large complexes going up on that side of town than there are on the west side. And as Tom correctly pointed out, the response time is significantly higher there, especially during rush hour. And it's also, if we were to, for instance, put another station on Lowell Street, I know a number of years ago, we had, there was a committee that had convened to discuss that, that would shorten our response time to that area, plus it would allow us to get one fire truck up onto the highway. We go to the highway all the time now. And that regularly takes two thirds of our shift because you want to be able to protect the people that are that are hurt in the automobile accident. We want to be able to, we want to be able to protect ourselves by actually use the trucks to block for us. So not that we want that to happen, but if anything hits, if something's gonna get hit, let it hit the truck and not us, you know? So in the future, if our runs continue to increase, there's really two basic ways to solve that. Build another station, which will cost a lot of money. The station has to be staffed. That's 12 warm bodies, four officers and eight firefighters, okay? Option B, which is cheaper, but doesn't really do much for your response time, would be to run a run a second engine company out of headquarters, which they built big enough to do that. So we could theoretically do do that. But you still need to hire the 12 people, you know? And that's a big order for a safer grant. I'm not quite sure that we could pull that off, but.
I just think it's something to think about when when you consider, to your to your point, Deputy Chief, looking at Autobahn Road, a major event there, and then there's a major event at Foundry or or Tarrant Lane or something like that. We're talking about three pieces, you know, to be spread out. Something else I think needs to be considered, perhaps, it sounds like, you know, also are we, do we have the the equipment, not just the people, but also the equipment to handle that?
The other thing too is our fire, half of our fleet is getting substantially older. Our two oldest pumppers are a 2001 and a 2006. That's kind of old for a frontline modern fire truck. The 2001, frankly, if it starts costing us a fortune, we're just gonna get rid of it and try to run with one spear. I will tell you, modern fire apparatus is not like what they used to make. Everything's very, it got very complicated electronic systems in it. The exhaust and emission system is very complicated and very expensive. And everything's got sensors in it and all it takes is one sensor to put a fire truck out of service. So I know I'm making a, I made a plug for that already in the capital planning, but it deserves reinforcement that, you know, you can't just sit on the all the apparatus that we have forever.
I just think it also goes speaks to just one of the consequences of development when you think about it, because these are the things, police fire, you know, public safety, obviously, schools, all those things. But this is very tangible because you're able to, with the numbers, show us what we're looking at. And obviously, your projections are now that you're gonna have less calls going forward. You're gonna have more calls, sounds like response times could be delayed depending on where they are. And the nature of the calls may make it more difficult if you're going, like you said, into taller, you know, up to a fourth story or a fifth story versus going into a first or second story. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Vincent?
Thank you, Chair James. I'll say hi to Kevin, but we see you every two weeks, plus I see you on the warrants. But Chief and Deputy, it's always a pleasure to see you. As I said last year, when I served as your liaison, I think you're one of the finest fire departments that I saw spanning my 26 year military career, working with foreign fire departments, military fire departments, and fire departments in numerous states. First, I do want to congratulate you for applying for that safer grant. The fact that you saved the town $300,000 over the course of three years is almost a million dollar savings while you were able to bring the four firefighters on board. I did want to touch a little bit on about what Counselor Dobrowski was saying about equipment, because I did notice that in 2020, you had 3,733 calls. And now, the last two years, you've gone far in excess of 4,300 calls. So your your increase is 600 calls, oh, just over the last four years, from your 2020 numbers to your your current 2022, 2022 and 2023 numbers. So one of the things you asked for in your capital outlay was the fire boat. My recollection from talking to you last year, Chief, the the fire boat that we currently have is about 44 years old.
The what we have?
The fire boat. The boat you have, isn't it about?
1980, yeah.
1980?
Yeah.
Okay. And you just mentioned the fact that the fire pumppers are 01, 06, 17, and 21. They normally have a 15 to 20 year life expectancy. So we're already kind of beyond that on one and getting close to, well, getting close to be beyond it on the one from 2006. Are they still about $700,000 to $750,000 per? Is that?
I wish they were.
That's what they were last year.
Up over a million now. A lot of that, the price of steel is what's driving a lot of that. And and it also takes a lot longer to get delivered.
Yeah, what's the lead time between order and delivery?
I asked two months ago and I got a response of 1,100 days, which is a long time.
The ladder truck is dated, is the 2013 ladder truck, isn't it?
Yep.
The life expectancy of that is also about 15 to 20 years?
Yes, between 15 and 20, yeah.
So we're talking about 2028 to 2033, the town needing a new ladder truck. When we talked last year, that was in the 1 to 1.2 million dollar range. How much does that cost now?
That would be significantly more. You're probably closing in.
Close to what?
1.7.
1.7, 2 million. If you wait three years, it'll be 2 million.
And what's the lead time on on that from orders?
They're all about the same.
So sometime over the next seven to 10 years, the town is gonna have to give serious consideration as the number of calls go up and the demands go up on the fire department. We have significant expenditures coming up on equipment, major equipment, ladder truck and pumppers.
And you don't want to have personnel increases and equipment for the infrastructure that's growing all at once, which is where you're leading to. And that's exactly what will happen.
Yeah.
Or our service will be drastically affected.
Once again, I really appreciate all the efforts that you guys do. And I still need to come by and clean. You offered me a ride on the truck. I said, no.
4 o'clock, yeah, 4 o'clock every day.
I'm gonna come down and do that one day. 4 o'clock, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other questions or comments? Counsel McLean?
Just one, Chief. You had indicated to me that with the fully loaded vehicles, we're breaking some springs. I assume that's expensive. Please don't answer all, but what are the roads, a couple of the main roads that you'd really like to see fixed?
Well, there are some major roads that are scheduled to be repaired, Lowell Street, Salem Street especially. Salem's the worst in my estimation. A lot of the main drags, the the main thoroughways through town and.
Anyone else that may not be on our radar screen?
I mean, well, I mean, the the reason that that matters, and I'm answering the question that way.
Yeah.
Is because if you think about how we respond, you know, we're responding out of headquarters, we're getting on a main street. And the idea is to make up your time on the main street and then, you know, you obviously have to slow down when you get into the neighborhoods and all that. It's it 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 really beats the fire truck up a lot. You really have to, you really have to slow down because not that we're, not that I'm condoning fire trucks driving at like, you know, 45 miles an hour on a main drag, but even driving 30 miles an hour on some of these streets, I mean, if it does, imagine what it does to a fire truck if you, you know what it does to your car, so.
Just wanted to point out, it's a seamless web, the roads and the growth and everything else. It's all tied together.
And then they get to drive back fully loaded too, if they didn't use any water or anything like that. You know, I mean, even if you're not driving fast on those roads, Salem Street is is really, I can't wait for that to get paved.
Okay, that's all. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
You have our DPW staff behind you, so I know they'll be eager to tell you they've got plans for this year. Any other questions or comments from the council? Any other questions or comments from the Council? Sherry, did we have anyone from FinCom online?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, then. We will take a motion to approve the fire department budget for fiscal year 2025 as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Sherry, do we have Counselor Danny here online, or can we still do a show of hands?
She's not online yet.
Okay. Any discussion prior to the vote? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six-zero. Thank you so much. Deputy, thank you so much, Chief, for being here today. Appreciate both you putting your time here today, but also the work that's gone into the presentation, and look forward, Deputy, look forward to connecting with you on, on some of the data pieces as well.
Thank you for your support, as, as always, all of you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might point out, today is the 50th anniversary of the day, so thank you for you and your family service, Chief.
Thanks.
See you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it's not the easiest budget to deal with, but I really appreciate the support.
Thank you so much. Let's move on to item 7B, Budget Number 29, the Department of Public Works. Mr. Gill, we'll let you get started while Mr. Conway and Ms. Wade join us.
Right, Mr. Chairman. The DPW budget for fiscal '25, there are actually four budgets rolled, rolled in here. We have the DPW operating budget, we have the snow and ice budget, and then we have the sewer enterprise and the water enterprise budgets. For the operating budget for fiscal '25, we're recommending an increase of $281,489 over the current fiscal year. There is an increase in personal services of $219,255, which includes contractual and negotiated increases. All contracts are settled, except for the clerical union. They are looking for one new position for the second shift custodian to help out at the police department, the Ace Building in Vets Field. Under purchase of services, the total increase is $56,234. Under engineering, the increase was $22,950. Of that, $5,000 was for equipment maintenance and software, $1,250 for training, clothing and safety gear. Safety gear increased $1,700. In, under professional services, GIS, there was an increase of $15,000. Fleet maintenance, we increased the equipment maintenance line item, $15,000. Under the building department, we increased electricity, $4,922. We also did increase the civic sever, civic center offset by $1,138. We increased forestry and parks, $11,500 for professional services. And also under cemetery, we increased professional services, $3,000. Under materials and supplies, there was a total increase of $6,000. Engineering, we increased the paper stock line item, $1,000. And under forestry and parks, we increased the artificial fields maintenance line item, $5,000. So, the total fiscal '25 budget for the operating DPW budget was $7,000, $7,252,058, with $7,141,318 coming from tax levy, and $110,740 coming from available funds. These available funds include $46,738 from the perpetual care fund, $2 from the park trust funds, and $64,000 from the sale of cemetery lots fund. The snow and ice budget, we are recommending level funding at $850,000. The sewer enterprise budget, we are recommending an increase of $22,216. Major changes here, under personal services, there was an increase of $54,967, which includes the contractual raises. Under purchase of services, there was an increase of $25,000 for equipment and maintenance, maintenance of equipment and software. And under the intergovernmental line item, the MWRA assessment was decreased $88,711. The total sewer budget for fiscal '25 is $9,367,204. And for fiscal '25, the water enterprise budget, we're recommending an increase of $240,855, for a total of four million, I'm sorry, $7,470,570. Major changes in the water enterprise budget, the increase in personal services, $65,310, again, for contractual increases. And we also decreased the intergovernmental line item for the MWRA, $24,635. And we increased the maturing debt line item, $170,661. And that's for the, basically, the water main replacement program that we're doing. And that will take care of the DPW budgets.
Thank you. Mr. Conway, anything you want to add before we hear from FinCom?
Sure. Absolutely. Do you want to get into the details, or just want to give an overview, and I'll let Jim do his thing?
Whatever you think would be helpful for us.
Sure.
You can certainly wait on the details for questions if you prefer.
I'll do that, really. Kevin took most of, so Joe Conway, Public Works Director, with me, and Wade, my fantastic partner, who's our business manager. Kevin really covered most of it. I have a little couple of things for context that I'll go through, but I'll sit tight for a second and let FinCom provide comment first.
Great. Mr. Sullivan, if you wouldn't mind giving us the view from the finance committee?
Sure. Good evening. So, Jim Sullivan, I'm the chairperson of the subcommittee for the DPW. And it's, Kevin covers everything that, you know, you want to look at. I find, you know, 4% budget, 3.9% budget are pretty well in line. The budgets are all a little higher, maybe, this year than in years past, but there's a lot of contractual items and different things like that. This budget, I think, is, is a solid budget. We, we had a lot of questions on some of the salaries and different things like that, and Joe was very transparent, as well as Ann. They provide good information for us when we needed it, gave us some explanations on some, some salaries that were much higher than anyone might expect, and it was a good explanation that the FinCom has. In the, you know, the operating budget, again, the 3.9, it, it is in good line with what you might expect for the work. You know, I will say, and I know Steve says this, you know, DPW kind of does everything else, right? And, and I think they spend their money very wisely, and I think we all get a lot for it. The snow and ice budget, I think Joe's done a great job on that this year. I'm expecting a big return on that, so we'll, we'll see how that plays out.
Yes, we will.
And then, last of the enterprise numbers look good this year, you know, when you look at the MWRA assessments and the salary increases, and there were some other line items that would decrease. So, overall, we, we worked through it from end to end, and we're pretty pleased with it.
Thank you. Thank you. Comments or questions from the Council? Mr. McLean?
Just a couple. Joe, I note that water and sewer preliminary are down about $120,000. We're going to get a little bit better deal on the preliminary estimates from MWRA. Is that accurate?
We should. So, past practice, generally, water stays pretty true. I'll say, you know, from my view of the world, I'm pretty happy where the assessment came in there. There's some other communities certainly hit harder there. And then, past, you know, our experience, at least my experience, in the seven years I've been coming to this meeting now, the sewer assessment tends to be a little conservative preliminarily. And then, unfortunately, at the 11th hour, sometime in June, right when we're about to set the rates for the year, we'll get a final, and that tends to generally go down. I don't have any inclination one way or the other, other than some optimism that that will follow suit, and that number will look even better come a couple of months' time.
One other thing, we're, you know, there've been times this year where we haven't seen much of the, the Gold Orb, and we've had some rainy times. But over the course of the year, our billings are pretty good on the waterside?
Billings, they've been okay. I think we're probably going to experience a downturn, as far as the financials are concerned, just because of the way that the weather impacted us this year. One of the things that we've mentioned at length with the advisory board, we come in here for the rate hearing, is the importance to make sure that we have some retained earnings available to us, that should we experience a year like last year, we have the ability to offset that without having to do a dramatic rate increase, and so on and so forth. So, we'll anticipate some sort of a deficit. The level of impact right now isn't anything that we're not equipped to handle. And if that should change, the first thing we'll do is call Mr. Mayo, and we'll be back here. But we are pretty comfortable with where we stand, you know, macro, you know, all things concerned.
Yeah. Well, you know, we always watch pretty carefully on the water sewer rates. The, the one other thing is, why do you ask for 1.9 instead of the 8.50?
So, it's, it's really, I'll probably have to credit my predecessor. I picked up how he did his fuel and his snow and ice. And really, all's that is, and as crazy as this is with the past couple of years, if the larve averages prove to be true, that's what we could spend for an average winter. And I'll just give you a quick example. So, we've tracked this back to 1995. I have data of every time it snowed, all the precipitation, I can tell you by month, cost per hour, you name the metric, it's pretty much there. But what that really is, so the average, we average about nineteen events, and that's a call-out, any time that the conditions are such where we need to treat the road in some capacity. The average is that we have seven plowable events, and we have 12 sanding events, and that we have 44 inches of snow. So, assuming all that comes true, $1.9 million based off of what the staff rate is and the contractual rate from hired help could be what that is. In no world will we ever come in and actually ask for that upfront. We've done a lot of things to try to stream on that as much as we can, especially with some of the apathy in the construction industry towards, you know, snow removal and things like that. You know, the list of people in line to get into that isn't very long. So, that's really just a transparency piece to say, you know, if, if this trend that we're experiencing now is to be dramatically different, here's what, you know, a plausible end-of-the-year number could look like. I latch on to the optimism of, of the finance committee and hope that that trend continues for much longer.
I don't find it to be terribly optimistic, but the ponds used to freeze back in the day, so you probably could bring that number down a little bit, I would think, you know, given that we're now the Miami of the north.
Oh, we're North Carolina. We've moved south.
You did say North Carolina this morning.
Yeah, it was, it's getting warmer.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gill, do you want to just speak for, just a moment on just some of the nuances of budgeting for ice and snow, because the, the rules from the state are actually different than our, our other budgets?
So, I do remember years ago, when our snow and ice budget was $293,500, I think. And we did consistently go for what's called a overdraft transfer. So, this, this budget has come up over the last fifteen years to where it is today at 8.50. However, this is one of those items that, if we were to lower our snow and ice budget, we would lose the ability to, I'll give it to Kevin.
Do the overdrafts.
Do the overdrafts. So, we can do that without going to town meeting and getting more money. It's the one budget that we're allowed to over expend in that area, and then add it on to the tax levy for next year. So, it is, it used to happen a lot, but we were at $293,500. So, I think we, we've moved this budget to a good point, and if you look at the last few years, you know, 8.50, 7.02, this year, halfway through the year, we're at, what, $33,000 or something like that for the first half of the year? So, I don't want to jinx it, but that would be a really nice number.
I think we, we feel comfortable that if the trend in the weather continues, we'd be very happy with the return that happens this year.
So, I mentioned...
But I'm not sure I would, I would go under, down on the 8.50.
Yeah, no, exactly. And I, and I think that dynamic, that's also why we don't, haven't gone up to that 1.9 million.
Exactly.
Because if we feel like we're overappropriating, we couldn't bring it down without running the risk of, of basically being out of money in a really bad year. So, this 8.50, the reason why we kind of landed there after so many years was it seemed like the right number to kind of give us the flexibility we needed to try to predict the unpredictable every year from a financial standpoint.
And it was painstakingly working with the finance committee over the years, and increasing it a little bit, increasing it a little bit. You know, we went to 400, and then to 4.50, and then, you know, but we're still coming in, there were, there were still snowier winters. And then, and the other thing is, if we really get hit with, hopefully with a bad snowstorm, that we can supplement that with FEMA funding or what have you. Problem with that is, is that, that money is coming in much later than it used to. It's harder to get it in quickly, and often not in the same fiscal year, which kind of screws you up.
No. We're equipped to hit those submittals pretty fast. Actually, the way that we do all of our invoicing and everything is geared towards them declaring an emergency, so we can hit print and submit it, and then it's up to them. Generally, what happens is you work with a case manager from FEMA, and it goes on for so long, and then they tend to get redeployed and somebody new comes in. So, we are ready to expedite that as quick as we can, should we need it.
Other questions from the Council? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Johns. Thank you for being here tonight, Joe and Ann. Joe, at least for the last two years, the MWRA Board of Directors has, has issued their final assessment the Tuesday or Wednesday before our Monday meeting. And as you indicated, the sewer has come down those last two years. I don't remember the name of the gentleman who's our contractor and his company, but that, that the advisory board of Public Works works with. There's a contractor that...
So, we bring in someone, Matt Abrahams of the Abrahams Group.
Can we, can we make sure he's at the ready this year, in the latter part of that week, as soon as MWRA Board of Directors drops those final numbers, to do, to do a reassessment of what the recommendation would be for us? Because we've been scrambling in the last two years to do that, literally, the Monday afternoon before the town council's Monday night meeting.
Absolutely. So, what we're going to do this year is, we are going to, maybe two years ago, we had the rate hearing, actually, the second, we're going to schedule the rate hearing for the last meeting that you have in June.
Good.
The other thing we're going to do is we have everything locked and loaded, ready to go with that line, and then we're going to have the advisory board vote on it as soon as we get it, or as late as we can. We might, depending on their time, we might not, it might not match up, but we're going to make sure that our action, which generates a recommendation to the council, is at the last possible minute it can be, so we can use that lower number.
Excellent. Thanks for making that adjustment.
Very similar like last year, but less of a fire drill this time, I hope.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anytime.
That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right. I think we have to take, well, let's call it one motion with four things.
One as presented.
So, we'll, we'll take a motion to approve the Department of Public Works budget for fiscal year 2025, the snow and ice budget for fiscal year 2025, the sewer enterprise budget for fiscal 2025, and the water enterprise budget for fiscal 2025 as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six-zero. But wait, there's more.
Yes, there is.
All right. Item number eight, annual town meeting. So, we've got a couple articles from DPW, so I'll let you speak, Mr. Conway, to items A, B, C, and D together, if you like.
Sure. So, I will just kind of wrap this up. The Warren article list from Public Works this year is intentionally on the smaller end. We're very grateful for all the work that the Council's given us through ARPA. We have a lot on our plate. So, everything you hear before us, it's two annuals, and then two that are, you know, high priority. We don't really have anything more than absolute necessities here. I'd just like to thank Mike Group. They've been excellent with stretching their dollars, searching out grants, and trying to turn over every stone we can to fund the projects that we're looking to do, you know, regularly. If I could throw Ann kudos really quick, she just delivered on a Veterans Heritage grant that was finalized this week. Got a little bit more money coming to us for the Soldiers and Sailors Monument, which is always nice. And, I mean, there's no secrets that Bill Renault, who's sitting behind me, his group is about as aggressive as they can be with some of the infrastructure stuff, so it doesn't go unnoticed from the administrative side on our end, and I'd just like to publicly thank everybody for that. Take it away, Ann.
So, the first article we're looking for is a dollar for the eminent domain. It's an annual staple, pretty much a insurance policy for the town. If we need to do an easement or go on some property, pretty routine.
I was going to say, let's go through the four, and then we'll, we'll vote from there.
Sure. Sure. For refuse recycling and yard waste, $2,456,958. That pretty much covers the contractual increases by our disposal, our curbside pickup. It covers the pit and the days that's open. I think we're lucky right now, we have a very good contract. I think when things are up in '27, things will change greatly. So I think we'll take advantage of that now.
And then just for my part of this, the next request for Warren article consideration is for $5 million borrowing for water main replacement. So one of the things, as the administrative turnover happened around 2019, that we did, aside from bringing in the Abrahams Group to audit our financials every year, we redid our capital plan for our water infrastructure out there. And really what we're looking for is a couple of things. So age, condition, and break history, water quality issues, and then things like fire flow. So we want to make sure that after Salem Street gets paved and Chief Sullivan has a very nice ride down to Otterbone Road, there is enough water and sufficient flow so that when his folks get to work, they have everything they need to put that out and get back safely. So with all that being said, there's no shortness of work that we have there. What this borrowing is gonna cover essentially is Main Street around the lake. We have two things happening there, so there's a break history on that road, the age and condition speaks to get replaced. And then the other thing we have is it can be substantial improvements to that quarter at some point, so like to make sure that the water is finished and everything is wrapped up. So when it's made beautiful and, you know, transform into, you know, whatever may happen in the future, all the underground is considered. Along that, we know we have work on A Bourne Ave that we have to do, and we've identified Emerson Street as another area that needs to be replaced based on age and condition. From that point, our capital plan, we have a bunch of other places that we can go with that. We have an estimate of what we think that these major mains are probably gonna cost us, but we won't know what exactly we're gonna be able to do in addition to that until we see kind of what the base bid comes and how we add the alternates into that. So that basically covers that. And the last thing we have for Warren article considerations for Fuel Island design. So if you drive by our property at North Ave, smack dab in the middle, there's a gas station essentially. There's two multi-thousand gallon gas and diesel tanks and a dispensing island. We're at the end of a 30-year life period for that, although the facility is in good shape and the tanks are in excellent shape. It's time to think about replacing it. We need to replace it because we can't warranty it should there be an issue with it. Some of our due diligence, initially, we looked at that, and we were going to replace it in kind smack dab in the middle of our property. And we started exploring the potential of an alternate site for that, and we were pleased to find out that there is a potential six-figure savings in looking at Nahat Street and moving it down there. It does a couple other things for us, too. It saves trip generation in a crowded intersection right next to the Galvin. The other thing that it does for us, too, is it frees up some space so the circular traffic flow and things like that of the facility that we operate could be better. Regardless of where we put this, we need to have drawings and plans done for some of the underground work. So we will have a set done for both sides, and once that's done, we'll have a great understanding of exactly what the estimate needs to be, and we'll probably come back in the fall and present that to you for consideration. It's gonna cost $150,000 to take care of that at this moment, and then from there, we'll know exactly where we stand as far as replacement costs. So hopefully, we could do something where we can avoid the nasty stuff that we know is underground at North Ave, improve some of the traffic in that congested area anyway, and then continue to supply diesel fuel and gasoline to everybody in town. But, so the request there is for that $150,000. And quick four, if anybody has any questions, we'd be more than happy to dive into any of these at length if you'd like.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Director Conway, for this. I know two things for both you and Ms. Wade that often come up are recycling and refuse. And there's always the question of can we help with the recycling? So that we're clear on that, our current contract does not provide for that, and if we were to go from every other week to weekly, we're looking at basically double the cost. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And I know similarly, there has been an issue that has come up as long as I've been
on the council, but more so in recent years, about the idea of these larger buildings that have, are required to have their own private refuse and recycling pickup. Mr. Mayo, I think this goes back many, many years.
Since I can remember.
Yeah, I mean, so that-
At least 2015, I know that's the last time a formal vote was made at the formal board of selectmen, so it's been about a decade, yeah.
But in terms of, like, in terms of a-
Practice, yeah.
In terms of, like, a requirement of these buildings being constructed and having private, private collection, that has been a longstanding-
Yes.
-practice. And if that were to be eliminated, or I should say, if all of those buildings were to come online, this budget would look very different. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
You would probably be looking at close to a seven-figure difference. So the other thing, it would take about a year, a year and a half-
Yeah.
-to implement that. You'd have to add trucks. And then certainly on a, we provide it by line items, so that 7,500 tons a year that we anticipate generating, that number would change. The collection costs would go up, and then there would probably be quite a bit of back and forth between the town, Mr. Mullen unfortunately, and the contractors because at least in some of the due diligence that we've done, they've all asked, when we get into the conversation and talk with them about that, what their protection would be from a liability standpoint. So they would either need, you know, written sign-offs or easements or something like that, but it would, it would look completely different, I would assume.
And that's also working under the numbers that we have under this current contract, but to your point, come 2027, where it's going to be a very different landscape. So if we're looking at the sustainability from a budgeting standpoint, that'll be really kind of blown out of the water when that's renegotiated next time. Is that, is that your expectation?
Yes. And one of the things that, so just to be transparent, one of the things that we're anticipating, we know absolutely will change at the end of this contract. Now really, your options for vendors that are gonna bid on this, there's three big ones. They're global, and they dictate the terms. So when it comes to recycling, there is a push for automated recycling, similar to the way we used to do the towders. And at least two out of the three that I know will definitely be interested in the contract have said that if it's not automated recycling, they not even entertain it. So they're at the point now where, you know, they're looking for the business if the business works for them, but they really don't need to get into that. So that's a consideration that we'll have. The other thing is, right now, with the, you know, to not sound like a broken record, but I'll say it anyway, we don't pay anything for tipping fee for recycling or a processing fee. That will be something that we will see in the future. That could be anywhere from $40 to $100 a ton, kind of depending on how the market is, you know, that could fluctuate. I know there's some incentives based on how clean your recycling is. I'll tell you that my objection to any time that comes up in conversation, talking with the vendors, is I'm not convinced on the metric to decide exactly, you know, what the contamination percentage is. So that's something that we know we're gonna have to work for in the future. What you will probably see happen for Ann and I is that early in advance, should the towders be up for discussion, we'd probably be a little early to that if we could. That way, people get used to it, we can get the, you know, the conversation happening well ahead of time, you know, so that we're prepared, we have the infrastructure in place because that's something that we're gonna have to make an investment to purchase that, too. There are grants available, but there will be some sort of an expense related to that. So not to be doom and gloom, we're in an excellent spot now, and we hope that, you know, the efforts of everybody that's really passionate about sustainability can, you know, keep things moving forward in the right ways, and that reflects on cost, but there's just some of the things lurking out there that you'll see.
And for people who might be watching and are unfamiliar, towders are basically just the uniformed collection containers like we have for trash, but it would be for recycling as well going forward.
Correct.
And that's likely to be a requirement. And then just finally, you had mentioned that the Fueling Island design, I really support the idea of Nahat Street as compared to North Ave, and I do think that we should try to limit the kind of investment that we're making on North Ave, not knowing what the future of that site might, might hold for us. And certainly, we have, we need to make it functional, and we need that, but the idea of these kind of investments where you say it could be decades, you know, that it would be in use, I do think that being mindful that the North Ave facility may not be the facility we'd have in, in 10 years' time is important so that we're not, you know, duplicating those costs and replicating those costs elsewhere.
The one thing I'll say to that, too, is no matter, at least the discussions I've had, should we need to do something, really the goal of getting away from North Ave primarily is to get out of, we have to dig underground there. We know we have to dig through some stuff that we don't want to, if we don't have to. Anything that we do put there, should we have to, will be constructed in such a way that should it need to be moved, it's plug and play.
Great.
So, you know, there's some redundancy in that, but our goal will be the same as you. We don't want to make any strained investments, so.
Well, as your liaison, just say, I'm ever impressed by what DPW does, so thank you for your work.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Smith-Galvin.
I just want to follow up on the recycling and refuse because I think it hasn't been said that you are doing a lot already in terms of sustainability, Ann has worked with the Environmental Sustainability Committee on more cardboard and things like Christmas lights. So, you know, while we are looking at increases in costs certainly, I think, you know, we're already doing a lot, and I think that over the next couple of years, we really need to put a focus on waste reduction because these prices are gonna go up whether we're picking up from multifamilies or not. And just so residents of multifamilies know, I think there's a good argument to be made that you are paying taxes and that there should be a way to do this or at least work together to reduce that. It is also illegal to put this recycling into the waste stream. So people who are living in multifamilies and are throwing recycling, cardboard, you know, even mattresses and things like that, it is illegal to be into the waste stream. And so that needs to be, you know, I think we all have to do it. I think there's, I believe it's our health department that kind of oversees dumpsters in Wakefield, but even residents kind of need to be pointing out and telling their, their building managers that this should not be going into the waste stream, and what can we do about it? So I think there's a lot of education awareness that has to happen.
Thank you. Other questions?
If I could just provide, so you mentioned the scrap metal thing-
Yeah.
This jumped out at me. So just a calendar year '23, you save 15 and a quarter ton from ending up somewhere else.
Sorry, did you say 15 or 50? I mean, either way, it's a big number.
15.28 tons.
Wow. And when did we implement that, in '23?
Oh, geez.
July.
July. Ann had got a grant through the recycling dividends program. We bought another dumpster, we're hooked up for that, and it was really as posting a sign and having Jen McDonald put out a little information of what we're looking for. And, you know, it takes about 40 minutes door to door every week, and we bring it, and there's a small, you know, commodity dividend that comes back, but, you know, the real bang for the buck there is that it's not $100 a ton that's going through the incinerator. So anything we could do, really any commodity that we could do something like that with that's manageable for us, we're absolutely gonna do.
And that's a drop-off, so anybody living in any renting, owning, any type of household can utilize that.
Same thing for cardboard.
Yep.
Great. Thank you. That's an amazing number.
It surprised me, too. That's deceiving.
That's a lot. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Sullivan, anything from finance committee that we haven't covered?
No, nothing you haven't covered.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll take a motion to approve the eminent domain refuse recycling, water main replacement, and fueling item, sorry, fueling island design articles as presented?
So move.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
We have Ann Danneke on the line as well.
Okay. We will consider that vote as standing for six, and we'll keep that in mind for our next votes. Item number eight, E. Thank you very much, Evan, Ann, and Joe.
Thank you.
And Jim. Item number eight, E, is referral of a citizen petition related to the MBTA Communities Act to the planning board. As a reminder, this is our procedural referral to the planning board, not a discussion for content here. Do we have a motion?
Move to refer the citizens' petition for the MBTA Community Act to the planning board.
Seconded.
Any discussion or questions on the procedural question? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote for this. Councilor Danneke? All right, we'll come back to her. Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Councilor McLean?
Hi.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Dobrowski?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Councilor Danneke, do we have her back?
Yeah, she's there, just doesn't look like she's unmuted.
Okay.
Hi, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Ann.
I'm having some technical difficulties.
No worries. So motion, myself, yes as well. So motion carries six zero with Councilor Dobrowski abstaining. All right. Item number nine, traffic advisory recommendations. Do we have Lieutenant Anderson or is this you, Mr. Mullen? Mr. Mayo, sorry.
Oh, I guess it's me.
Yeah, Joe Anderson is coming over right now.
Oh, he is? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, he's here. Yeah. Hi, Joe.
Good evening, Lieutenant. Thanks for, for waiting for us, and we'll let you go ahead when you're ready.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was a town council, Lieutenant Joe Anderson, Sheriff of Traffic Advisory. I have two recommendations for town councils we consider from a couple of our recent meetings. The first is the TAC recommends that an intersecting street warning sign be placed on Prospect Street heading downhill, which is eastbound, in the area of Morningside Road and Overlake Road. This is a citizen's request, and we actually had some good conversation with a few residents from the area that report that some of the intersecting streets there are a little hairy to exit out onto Prospect Street due to the limited visibility going downhill and rounding the curve there. So we reviewed this request at one of our most recent meetings and recommend that a sign that conforms to the manual on uniform traffic control devices, sign guidelines be placed. I tried to find one for you that was an exact representation of the street's curve and intersection, but I couldn't find one. So Bill Renaud's gonna do his homework on that and make sure that it conforms to that manual, but it's basically a typical roadway curve warning sign that shows the intersecting street going around the curve there. So that is our first recommendation. I can neither pause there for you or go to the second.
Do we have any questions from the council on that recommendation? All right, seeing none, let's talk about the second, and we'll, we'll take both of them together for a vote.
Sure. So the second is a little bit more involved. We had a, a meeting where we discussed commercial vehicle drop-offs in the downtown area, specifically the square, Main Street, Albina Street, Princess Street, and that area. So there's a loading zone restriction that's been in place for quite some time in the area of farmland on Richardson Ave just before you get to Main Street, and that is a 7A to 2P restriction. It's restricted to trucks as a loading zone, so an active loading zone there. And that's, that's worked with a great deal of success for many, many years. But what we've been seeing, and particularly our traffic parking enforcement officers have seen an increase in delivery vehicles, everything from Amazon and FedEx and UPS to larger box trucks that are delivering to some of our restaurants in the area, double parking, parking on the sidewalk, parking in areas that obstruct our crosswalks and our view of the intersections. So I'm sure if you've walked or traveled the square, you've seen some of this go on during the day, specifically right around Princess Street, which makes it difficult to see the crosswalk and see oncoming traffic. So what we're recommending is, I think I may have lost you.
We can hear you.
Okay, all right. It's frozen on my screen, so as long as you can hear me.
Your video is frozen, but we can hear you just fine.
Okay, hold on one second. I'm gonna see if I can unfreeze that, one second. All right, that seems a little bit better.
Yep.
The recommendation was to move the 15-minute space that's on the corner of Princess and Main Street down, and then take those first two spaces and make them a loading zone. However, only during those hours of seven A to two P to allow for those to be used by really anybody else that would want to park there, so our businesses, our restaurants after hours and things like that. Problem is with just one space there as a fifteen minute space, there's a couple of issues. One is if there's already a vehicle that's parked there during those hours, then the delivery vehicle will typically park elsewhere and it's usually illegally parked. The second is that only allows for one space. So, if we have those first two spaces on Princess Street designated as a loading zone, it would accommodate some of our oversized vehicles. So, even like a typical FedEx truck, if it parked in that first space there, it's too big for just one space and they often won't take up both spaces, which is kind of funny because they don't really seem to think twice about parking on the sidewalk or double parking or doing some other things. But for some reason, they won't take up two spaces, which causes an overhang into our crosswalk and creates kind of a dangerous situation there. So, our recommendation would be to make those first two spaces a loading zone during those hours, same as the current loading zone that's existed with great success near Farmland on Richardson Street. So, those are our two recommendations here and I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, Counselor Danighy, any questions? I can't see if you have your hand up.
No, I am all set. Thank you.
All right. In that case, we will take a motion to approve both recommendations from the Traffic Advisory Council Committee with regard to the warning sign on Prospect Street and designating the first two spaces on Princess Street, Princess Street, excuse me, as loading zones between seven AM and two PM.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Yes, Counselor Butt?
Can I, I just want to say, I'm the liaison to Traffic Advisory Committee and I just want to thank Lieutenant Anderson and the committee. They do such a great job when they have their meetings and make these recommendations and the meetings are run really well. People come with really great questions and I think by the time it comes to us, it's been kind of vetted and these are really great recommendations, which is why you don't have a lot of follow up questions, Lieutenant Anderson. We want to get you out of here early. But I do want to, I do want to thank you and the entire committee. The meetings start at eight or eight thirty. They're early morning meetings, but they're very efficient and I just love how much you put into this, you and the entire committee. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And here, here on that comment. Seeing no other comments, we'll move to a roll call vote. Counselor Danighy?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Hi.
And myself, yes. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you so much, Lieutenant Anderson. Appreciate your time here tonight and all your work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Members of Town Council. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. We'll move on now to item number ten A, the Bike and Pedestrian Plan. So, Ms. Kekinda and Mr. Renault, come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Evening.
I hope you're all very well. I'm going to be trying to do a guest talk about our Bike and Pedestrian Plan. I appreciate all your time and effort that many of you have put into this and I think hopefully after tonight, we'll walk away with a product that people are happy with. So, I'm here with Bill. I'll just kind of kick it off. I feel like we have it down now. And so, just to kind of give a quick overview of, we work together with MAPC, of what the key goals of a Bike and Pedestrian Plan are. Ultimately, it really is to encourage walking. I think that gets lost sometimes. Biking and rolling to key destinations throughout town. It's to establish a plan that connects local destinations and surrounding communities through a safe, comfortable, and convenient routes to advance our town's complete streets policy. And then another bullet point that's not up there and I think is also really important. It helps streamline the grant processes for both the Department of Public Works and any planning processes that we have moving forward. And so, I'm going to hand it over to Bill to kind of talk about updates we've made since we were last here two weeks ago.
Sure. So, thank you, folks. Bill Renault, Town Engineer. So, since we were at our February twenty sixth meeting, we've made some updates to the plan based on Counsel Vincent's written comments that he provided us. We heard some comments at the meeting from Counsel McLean and from Counsel Dobrowski, mainly around the Main Street corridor and the right of way width with, you know, the fifty-five foot wide right of way that gets a little bit larger in a couple of sections. So, I've provided a couple of new cross sections that lay out what that stretch could look like if we were to incorporate both a shared use path as well as a bike lane. You'll note that the shared use path has to neck down to ten feet as opposed to the twelve and we can still accommodate. Again, this is one option of many and when I get into design for this stretch, I will come back to you folks with an updated design. Aside from those, we looked at the Main Street drivelanes and parking aisle that Counsel Dobrowski had mentioned. And both of these options, they're twelve feet wide. One has a nine foot parking lane and one has an eight foot parking lane, depending on which route we wanted to go. With our small parking lane, we'd be able to fit in probably some type of tree buffer or grass area that's shown within the cross sections. We've incorporated a bunch of different cross sections within the various bike accommodations as we had talked about previously doing. So, those were revised and incorporated. And then we also updated the project description pages, the chart, and the map for consistency. So, all of those match. There was a, I believe the last draft would have gone out, was it Friday or today even?
Today.
Today. Yep. So, the last draft went out today. Then incorporates a couple of those other, just kind of housekeeping edits. It kind of shows us our updated list. There's been a couple of additional ones in there. So, some of the shared streets that were mentioned. There was a request for shared streets and charros to be installed on Main Street and Greenwood. That's been incorporated. We've incorporated all the shared streets that are being recommended. So, those little side streets for each of the branches that are in the greenways. And then there was also a request for a charo on Salem Street, so that's also been incorporated.
And I'll just note, Bill and I went through each street through this project to make sure it fully, the graph was fully filled out, that it all made sense as well. So, we spent a lot of time on this.
That we did. That we did. I agree. So, we also wrapped up our public comment period. That extended beyond the March first, which is supposed to be the cutoff. It actually extended into the fourth of March. We received about eighty-nine folks that provided comments, just kind of my quick common themes. Folks that were definitely supportive. We had about thirty-nine folks respond as fully supportive. We had about thirty folks that were indifferent. I will note that most of them were providing feedback or suggestion comments as well, so I wouldn't say they're necessarily not supportive. But it was definitely gray, so we kept it, you know, as kind of indifferent in this tally. Not supportive, we definitely had nineteen folks that were definitely not big fans of this plan. That was clear. About six questions, a good chunk of feedback and suggestions, which was great. About thirty-four folks providing us different suggestions. And then the last one, really what I'm calling interpretation, misinterpretation. So, a lot of the discussion that I saw was regarding parking downtown and around Lakeview, which we're really not looking to remove, but it was a lot of folks saying that they don't want that to happen. So, that's kind of our roll up on the public comments. So, kind of next steps where we're at. Hopefully, if we're adopted tonight, our next steps would be to finalize the copy with the graphics and changes requested tonight, if there are any. We get a final copy of the plan posted up on the town website. We'd start to implement any of the recommended projects. Obviously, they would go back to the TAC for review and then approval to this body in the future if we move forward with any of those projects. And then lastly, it's a living document, so I'm recommending some type of periodic review, maybe every five years or so, I think would make sense. Future amendments, whether, you know, whether from residents or from the council, we would come back to you folks after a traffic advisory review to have any amendments adopted by you folks as well. So, that's sort of where we are in a very brief presentation. I know we've talked about this a lot, so we are happy to answer any questions on the Bike and Pedastrian Plan.
Thank you. Well, we have talked about this a lot and again, I just want to reinforce our thank you to both of you for the work on this. We know it's been quite a bit of effort and, you know, I think in the process of going through this, you know, we've put together a good product and certainly one that's improved over time with the feedback we've gotten from the public and with the efforts of both of you. So, thank you for your time. You know, we recognize that time has been quite a bit.
Yes.
Yeah.
Before we open it up to discussion or questions, I actually do want to take a motion to approve the plan and then we'll focus discussion from there. So, do we have a motion? Thank you, Counselor Smith Galvin. Thank you, Counselor Butt. Let's open it up for discussion and questions. Counselor McLean?
Bill, the, we're going to vote tonight, but we don't have the final plan, right? I don't have the final plan with the final edits.
They were forwarded out today, right?
Steve, you said they were put out today, the one I sent you this morning? Sherry, I think.
I know that we got some updates today. Sherry? Maybe Sherry can answer me?
Yeah, there ain't go vendor.
Okay, so they were put in today.
I would say that one you got today was just updates to the cross sections, new images, and then just very small commas, grammatical things. That would have, no real large substance.
I'm just confused because in my package, I reviewed everything, you know, over the weekend and I don't recall actually seeing the full plan. I think we should vote, either way. We've had enough time with this.
So, yeah, I mean, I think.
I haven't seen the changes that are referenced in your small, you know, PowerPoint. I haven't seen those changes.
So, yeah, again, the changes that would, that, there were still cross sections in the plan that you received on Friday. To be consistent with what the document was with the other cross sections, we went ahead and just made sure they were consistent and the imagery all looked the same. And then the other edits were just basically commas and things like that.
Before I saw your results on this graph, I went through every single comment. I'm just going to point out from my perspective that I did a definite yes, a definite no, and, you know, eight people asking for a sidewalk, for example, on Townsend. Obviously, that's over there. But I had thirty definite yeses and twenty-nine definite no's. So, obviously, we had a little bit of a different perspective on what the comments were. I don't think it's statistically valid study anyway, so it doesn't really matter. Bill, we, it really was, I think, last meeting when we learned that the right of way on Main Street is fifty-five as opposed to sixty's. That's fairly recent development. And again, I think you said that was because we were relying, apparently for almost three years, on something that MAPC had provided to us, right? And that was incorrect. I do have concerns by the loss of that five feet because, you know, your graphic now specifically, you know, reaches that fifty-fifth foot, right? Can you guarantee today, just as an example, first of all, first question is, is it anywhere less than fifty that you're aware of?
No.
Okay. Can you guarantee that the shared use path on that side of the lake will always be at least ten feet because that's what you've got on your graph?
I believe we can make that work, yeah.
Because I've been in areas where the sidewalk and the dirt strip itself don't even approximate, don't even reach seven. That's rare, but, you know, there's a lot of narrow areas. So, we're going to be moving this street out significantly, it looks like.
We may need to in sections, but again, it's, for the fifty-five, we would neck down in certain sections too. So, I mean, I think you'd also have areas that have a, that have a shoulder in those sections too. So, again, like I've said a bunch before, I'm not looking at every cross section across the whole entire run. We look generally at the right of way based on the comments that I received, especially Mr. McLean from you, obviously. We, I took some time to look through the right of way information and we have right of way width of fifty-five everywhere except in sections that it widens out. And it does widen out in two or two sections. One is by the cove, whether that's, you know, the right of way is probably where some of the rocks are, realistically. And then there's another section as you get kind of closer to Quarter Street, where it winds out to about seventy-something feet, a little bit more than seventy feet.
So, the, this, when's the next? I know on the website, I believe, that we've said, well, we want to start looking for grants. When's the next grant that you'd be looking for? Is that a year from now? Is that right of way?
We look for grants all the time.
Well, right, but on a road, on a road like Main, is Main Street next up after Lowell, Salem, North? Is Main Street next, in your mind?
In my mind, well, I mean, I think the goal, we're considering we're always starting on North Ave is to try to get through the loop. We already have Quinipaw Parkway included as an offsite contribution for the Cavan and Forbes piece, so that'll have that stretch. I mean, logically, it seems that that would be something we'd look at. But again, if the council would prefer us to sit on it for a year, we can do that too.
So, on North Salem, Lowell, Broadway, Vernon, those are all in progress, right?
Say the streets again.
North Salem, Lowell, Broadway, Vernon.
Yep. Some of those are, yeah. Yep.
Yeah. Do you see a bike lane on any of those streets?
Potentially Lowell, but I don't think we can fit two. Just looking at it from where we are, I think we could probably fit a one way.
Would it be protected or charo?
It would be just a standard bike lane, conventional. It wouldn't be protected. It would have just a stripe. Nope. Nope. There's a stretch and another one in between it. So, it'd be just a conventional bike lane, so a line, just a line with the five feet.
No infrastructure, just?
No infrastructure, more just paint.
Just paint, no poles, no other protection, I see.
No, I don't think I have the room.
And we're getting grant money on all those streets?
For the paint on that stretch?
No, I mean, for those streets that we're already, we already have in progress, are we receiving grant money for those?
So, for the ones that are in, we receive grant money for North Ave. For Lowell, we didn't receive any grant money. It's paint. So, I wouldn't consider that to be a grant project that I go after. It's not worth the time because it's such a small number. Salem Street, we were talking about a charo, so that would again be kind of the same idea. So, that was a resident request that came in a while back, looking for that as an option.
Okay.
Just to be clear, the pavement itself, I mean, we are repaving these roads.
We're repaving the streets.
That is part of our strategic road repair program.
Right, yeah.
And those are under our bond?
I'm sorry?
Our bond is funding those?
Yes, there.
Okay, okay. Yeah, the only concern I have is, and I know that the Chair of the Planning Board is here tonight and I've been to a couple of public hearings with the Planning Board recently on the MBTA, which he brought up tonight. And I recall at the second public hearing, the Chair said at about one minute fifty-seven that the survey results from Vision 2030 and the master plan speak to a lot of the outcomes this district is trying to achieve. And that's not related to this. That was related to MBTA communities.
So, bringing it back to this discussion.
Bringing it back to this, if I can have a little latitude, yes. What my fear is that Vision 2030 is then used to say this is, well, this is now what we need to do because of something that in this bike plan is specifically stated as being a high level aspirational document. It doesn't really tell you anything in terms of design, in terms of what's going to actually occur. So, I am concerned with that tight fifty-five feet, that if anything goes awry, that what's going to happen is that the shared use path is what would be shown. And that's going to be what is needed to be used by everybody else that's not a bicyclist.
I hear where you're coming from and I think that's why we would come back and have a dialogue on this stuff. I think that's where, that's where we would say, you know what, maybe we don't fit the bike lane in. There's something else you want to have. You would prefer to have more green space for, I know, I keep, one of the things I keep bringing up that I think gets missed a lot is the stormwater components because we've already made decisions here that you want that to happen. That takes up real estate as well. So, whether it all fits and whether the bike lane, I'm just showing you a concept that technically it fits. Is that the one I would propose without going into design? And I've probably said this four or five times, right? That I wouldn't, you know, I'd have to really look at all of these things.
Right. I just wanted to be clear. I don't think, you know, anything, I don't think I'm, some of us aren't going to be here when this comes up. Because we have a lot in the, that we're working on right now on the roads. But, you know, I've faced criticism for asking questions here and I want it understood. I think I'm the only counselor who has said at a public meeting that I would consider lowering the speed limit to twenty-five and I would take a lot of heat for that. I will vote for any sidewalk, anywhere, anytime, to fund it. We put a million dollars in this council into the rail trail from ARPA. You know, we have put ARPA money into sidewalks. We are not anti-safety. I'm not anti-safety. I live right down the hill from that item that we just mentioned, as do you, with the sign on Morningside. And I am sick and tired of people flying around that corner and having sixty-five-year-old men, women, and children having to run across that street because people are going too darn fast. And I think if we can enforce it, then we got to lower the speed limit in this town. But anyway, back to this, if I support it, it is with those reservations that I don't want a future council to think that they, because we voted this today, that they don't have the right to do exactly what you're talking about, Bill, which is to come back and look hard and long. I will, I will support any protected bike lane if there's room for it and if it makes sense. But we've already identified, it doesn't make sense on a lot of streets that we currently have in progress. It's not necessarily going to be every street.
They become bigger projects. I think that's, you know, and that's where it ties into the grant discussions, right? Because that's where we, these will be the streets that we're looking for.
And we just heard from FIRE that they're going to need more. And, you know, I'm a progressive spender, but I'm also conservative in a way. And we've got a lot of costs looking at us and looking at us increasing in the future. And I don't think we're going to build our way out of this problem. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions or comments from the council? Counsel Dabrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to, I want to thank you both, and I recognize you've spent an incredibly long time on this, so my, my comments are not at all in any way a reflection of the dedication you've put to this project. For as long as I've been on this council, there's always been this push, and I, I'd say need, to have a much wider sidewalk along the lake. That's always been known to be the case. And I think that, like, one of the rules of thumb, like, when you're doing building is sometimes don't lay all the side, all the sidewalks down, but see, like, where the foot traffic goes and then have the sidewalks reflect that. And I think when you look at, at the fact that we have almost no grass along those strips, it's pretty indicative of the fact that we need more space there, right? And I think that has been a common consensus we've all talked about. But this feels like it's, it's very much morphed into something different, especially as relates to that corridor, which I think is a very important corridor. And we're, I don't think we're ultimately achieving the best objective, especially for that space, at the sacrifice of bike lanes that comparatively will be far less utilized. And I think that that's a fair statement. We had, some of the earlier versions, even the plan from last month, had given, like, a cross-section, for instance, talking about 12-foot sidewalks in places. 12-foot feels, feels appropriate to me around the lake. There's a lot, you, you have a couple of people that are running, you have some people with, with baby strollers and the like. Next thing you know, it's not a lot of space ultimately when you think about it, especially when you have people going in two different directions. I run the lake a lot. What do I do? I often run, you know, into where there aren't parked cars in the parking area, especially when you come around the bend there. It gets dicey because you've got the barrier, you know, there. So I've, I've always dreamed of the fact that we could have something wider. So now we're talking about, from my perspective, what could potentially be, what's identified as 15 feet, 10 feet you've identified for sidewalk, five feet for bike. To me, that 15 feet could be far better utilized as 12 feet for sidewalk, which I think will get far more, far more people and create a safety for far more people. And then, you know, have, have the grass strip or whatever the case may be, because again, to your point, you know, we also don't want to have this to be, become like some kind of a concrete jungle, you know, across 55 feet or 60 feet, whatever, whatever the number is. So I guess when I was thinking about this some more after, after these meetings that, that we've had, it really stands out to me that there's almost a distinction between the bicycle component to this and the pedestrian component to this. And I think there's, I'd venture to say there's almost universal support for the pedestrian component. I was one of the first and will continue to be, I think, with everyone, saying, yes, sidewalks everywhere, invest the money in sidewalks. That's never been a question. Have better networks of sidewalks. That's the pedestrian piece, right? This rolling piece, I think, is kind of like a, a red herring. I don't know many people that are rolling anywhere, you know, across town, nor do I think people start rolling as a result of having, you know, significant changes. So I think we're talking about cyclists, and that we're talking about pedestrians, you know, walkers, and those with, with, with carriages. But I, I look at this and I just don't, I, I think that this just becomes such an overreach and creates a compromise for the majority of the people who will utilize this space. I think that the fact that we're talking about, we'd have to either cut down the parking lane by a foot or cut down the driving lane by a foot. You still create safety issues because you still have, you know, whether it's, it's eight and 12 or nine and, you know, like 13, you still have, I think, you know, I understand the, the wisdom of, of trying to contract parking, I mean, the driving lane to a point. But then I think you also run into safety concerns. You heard about the, the apparatus, you know, the fire department apparatus going forward. If you have a, a smaller driving lane, then that means that you, you have cars that are more likely, you know, to potentially hit someone who's getting out of a vehicle, especially if you have a smaller parking lane. So I, I just think on balance, where we have such limited real estate, and I think we're over dedicating a, a percentage of it to a much smaller utilization population at the sacrifice of a much larger majority utilization population. And that, that just doesn't, doesn't jive with me. And to Counsel McLean's point, I don't for a minute believe that when we have projects come before us in the future, this body, whomever's on it, there, no one's going to say, oh, but the master plan calls for this. Master plan, master plans especially have a way of establishing precedent. And then from here on out, the justification or the reasoning is, well, the master plan calls for this, so that's why we have to do it. And I've seen that in my seven years on this council, and I think it'll continue to be the case. And so I have great reluctance in doing that. But I don't think that this, you know, my, I've always approached all these decisions with doing the most good for the most people most of the time. And I don't think that this, as it presented, does that. Of course, I'm, I'm in favor of safety. Of course, I, I mentioned previously that if we can accommodate bikes in a way that doesn't compromise the vast majority of, of alternate users or primary users, I want to see that happen. I don't think we can do that. And I have great hesitation with this. I support all of the, the provisions relative to the crosswalks and unifying that. The whole vision downtown talks about bump outs and the like for that very reason, because pedestrian safety, I think, is a really paramount concern. And I think we have a lot of data to support that. I've not seen all the data that's supporting all the bike incidents that we've had in comparison, certainly not to the same scale if, if they're, if, if they've been there. So I'm concerned about pedestrian safety first and foremost. I'm concerned about making sure that we, we make the, our, our roadways safe for vehicular traffic, and traffic coming is important. Counsel McLean makes a good point. It is important. But this, this notion of the bike lane and how it ends up compromising the real estate across the board, I, I think it's, I think it's giving too much to ultimately too few users. And I have great respect for the cyclists here. I know that they've been passionate about this, and I respect that. I myself bike often, but I, knowing that, am still not in favor of this plan for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Counsel Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chimes. I appreciate you making the edits that I brought up at the last meeting, the substantive edits about MAPC not engaging with key stakeholders. So the language in there is appropriate, and also clarifying the housing production plan, language that was in there. I also appreciate you making the approximately 45 grammatical edits that I provided to you all. That's probably the reason you got a version today, because while I was on vacation last week in Florida, Mr. Mayo sent me the edits, and then there were a few more, and Aaron and I worked through them last Thursday afternoon. But, so I'm satisfied with all regards of the plan, except I have an amendment. Is this an appropriate time to make the amendment?
Please go ahead.
All right, Sherry, do you have that? Okay. Thank you. I move to remove the last sentence in the second paragraph on page 34 in its entirety and replace the sentence with the following. "The town council shall solicit and consider the advice and recommendations from the fire, police, and public work departments and the traffic advisory committee prior to the approval of all projects, including but not limited to projects delineated in figure 38 of this plan."
Do we have a second to the motion to amend?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair, for seconding the amendment. So I spent a lot of time thinking about this. I worked with Steve and Sherry today in the office because I wanted you all to be able to read it. The first thing I'll do is read you the sentence that I'm proposing to eliminate. It's once again on page 34. It says, "All projects must be vetted through the traffic advisory committee and approved by the town council." So this expands that to include the three departments, police, fire, and public works. The figure 38 that I'm referring to on here is that recommendation, recommended project spreadsheet. The reason, a couple of weeks ago, I talked about maybe having a supermajority dealing with the Main Street side of the lake. The reason I went in this direction is for the following reasons. Number one, this proposal encompasses all 63 recommended projects delineated in figure 38. The, the idea I had a couple of weeks ago would have been limited to just the Main Street portion of Lakeview. So I like this amendment because it encompasses all 63 of the recommended projects in here, plus any other ones that may come up by the council. Secondly, on page 41 of the document, I'm comforted that it says, and I quote, "The preservation of the parking in this section of Main Street is required to support the town's frequent event programming and recreational use at Lake Quinapaw." So the plan currently says on page 41 that maintaining the parking on the Main Street side of the lake is required. The other reason I did not include anybody other than the police, fire, and public works departments in the TAC is because on page 54 of the document, it says, "Engaging with the council on aging and the commissions on disabilities is strongly encouraged throughout the implementation process." So I was comforted that two other key stakeholders, the council on aging and the commission on disability issues, are already covered in another, another page in the plan. So it sounds like it's pretty obvious that this would be done, that the town council would consult with and, and receive advice from fire, police, and public works departments. But the reason I want that language in here is because that was not done with the original draft that we received. MAPC did not consult with police, fire, and, they did consult with the public works department, I'll give them that, because they consulted with the town engineer. But they clearly do not consult with police and fire departments, nor did they present their initial plan to the traffic advisory committee. So while this sounds like, well, obviously, this would be done, I want to get away from the language that just says it has to be vetted to the traffic advisory committee and make sure that it's specifically mentioned in, in this plan that they must solicit and consider the advice and recommendations from those departments and from the traffic advisory committee. So for those reasons, I would encourage you all to, to adopt the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Can I ask, is there any objection from the council to Mr. Vincent's amendment? Counsel Smith Galvin?
I guess I go friendly amendment to the amendment. I, I'm absolutely in favor of it. I think that those are all important data points that any future council should have at their disposal to look at plans. I guess I would just, and I, I believe it's still in the plan, that if there is a transit committee set up or a bike ped type committee that is focused on multimodal, that, that, that would be included. So just let the, the motion and the minutes reflect that any future council should take that input as well.
Counsel Vincent, are you, is that amenable to you?
Yeah, that's amenable.
Okay. Any, so we have kind of a, an amendment that has been amended again. Again, any objection to the amendment proposed by Counsel Vincent with the stipulation that Counsel Smith Galvin brought in?
All right. In terms of the vote?
I'm asking if there's any objection. If there's no objection, we'll consider it, adopt it into the main motion that's under consideration.
Oh, I, I prefer to vote on the, on the amendment.
Okay. We can do that as well.
I don't know.
All right. We'll take a roll call vote on the amendment if there isn't any further discussion.
Just so we're clear on this, this is only changing the language as proposed. The, the main motion itself is, is still in form.
The main motion is still pending. So this is Counsel Vincent's amendment as amended by Counsel Smith Galvin.
Right.
And could you repeat the amendment again? I kind of missed that.
Can you put it back on the board, the screen?
Do we have the amendment to the amendment in writing? Not, not your amendment, Counsel Vincent?
No, we don't have the amendment to the amendment.
And what is the amendment to the amendment?
The amendment to the amendment is that if in the future there is a multimodal transit, bike ped, official town committee, that that recommendation would also be considered by the town council.
So that would be a second sentence after the sentence that Counsel Vincent has amended.
So solicit and consider the advice and recommendations for fire, police, public works, the traffic committee, and any multimodal transit government committee.
Okay.
I'm withdrawing now. I think it might be easier to just do the whole vote.
Okay.
Unless somebody wants to vote the amendments. Do you think we should vote the amendments?
So everyone's clear on the amendment, and Sherry, you have the, the text?
I do, yeah.
Excellent. All right, we'll move to a roll call vote on the amendment as amended. Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
No.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Dabrowski?
No.
And myself, yes. Motion carries 5-0. All right, further discussion on the main motion?
5-2.
Ah, sorry, 5-2, thank you. 5-2-0, I guess, if you do the extensions. Any further discussion on the main motion? And again, Counsel Danahue, I can't see your hand, so if there's anything you wanted to say, please just show.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Okay. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Seeing none, Counsel McLean?
I just wanted to point out that one of the comments that we received, we did receive comments relative to a Malden firefighter who indicated that they, he is rate, you know, I think the term was often responding to bike lane accidents. So my only hope is that if this is adopted, it doesn't make the streets less safe.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on the main motion, which is the approval of the bike and pedestrian plan as presented and amended. We will take a roll call vote. Counsel Danahue?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
No.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Dabrowski?
No.
Myself, yes. Motion carries 5-2. Thank you very much again, Aaron and Bill, for all your work on this. Appreciate starting to see some grant dollars come in and some shovels in the ground.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 10B, American Rescue Plan Act update. So Mr. Mayo, I think you have a presentation.
Yes. Hopefully, they'll pull it up. Perfect. See if this is going to work here. Yep. So as, as I promised, there's, this is the quarterly update on ARPA, and then we'll take a pause after that. We go through what's happened so far, and then talk about some of the requests put in from town council members. So this, this right here includes expenditures through the 1st of March, which is the last time I wrote a report. So I'd get this out to you all. We all know that ARPA came in at about 8,000, excuse me, 8,000, over $8 million between the county and the town.
I think we would have spent it by now if it were 1,000.
8,000 would be gone. There were a number of budgetary expenses during the first few years to supplement some budgets as we weaved our way out of COVID and what have you. And there were a lot of expenditures directly towards responding to the pandemic. And we've been through these 100 times, you know, those numbers haven't changed. The council then did go through a long process and did approve some money for ARPA expenditures. And let's go through these very quickly. Energy Assistant Fund, which was for $400,000. We've expended 144 and some change to date as of May 1st, as of March 1st. However, I did just sign a requisition for another $10,600, I think, this afternoon. So that's kind of an up-to-date number there. Lake Quinapaw cleanup and the vets, that is, the bids will be open at the end of April. This is part and parcel of this. Is the bathroom, I think we're going to name that after, no, I told you that we're going to name the bathroom after.
She already has her water tank.
Oh, we didn't name it after. So that has, some engineering has been spent, and we will be, the bids will be opened up, and we will probably not receive the prefab building because of timing and construction delays until later in the fall. But we have a lot of work to do in the parking lot, anyway. So I imagine that would all be expended by October of this year, certainly all contracts signed. Lake pathways, this is those areas kind of off of North Ave and some of those streets that go through there. That is, all design will be in-house for that. So once they get out this spring and summer, we'll start spending the money on the, on the road. Our engineering department will do that. Rail Trail, Wakefield Mobility, we are at the point where Tom is struggling with the MBTA to get a license so we can do some work on that. And I know it's a lot of back and forth. I had Dennis in my office today, and he told me that, I said, how many trees are you going to replace this spring for me to get up to this number here? And he told me as many as possible. So that was his number. I told him, make it more than as many as possible. And he actually is, any contractors out there that want to help? We're actually having trouble getting contractors to help plant trees, amazingly enough. Sidewalk expansion, we have 776. We will finish a lot of that this spring with Nahann Elm, Parker, JJ Round, Maple Way areas, all being done in April of 2024. And then we talked a little about Lowell tonight, Lowell Street, you can see some of that going on. Lazaro, we signed a contract with them, so that will be done probably this spring, summer as well as we move forward on that. We'll continue to do more.
So Steve, is the asterisk 776, is that the amount that's committed?
That's about as committed as, as of now.
So it may not be-
Contract signed.
Right, may not be spent, spent.
Right. I think some of the areas that we would be looking at in those areas, maybe the Greenwood Ave, Maple Street area would be another area to come quickly out on that. And then maybe Vernon Street, we're looking at Vernon Street, a lot of infills there. And Prospect, Prospect Street from Elm to Chestnut, infills on both sides. I know that Counsel McLean would be happy about that one, or happier.
They're down sidewalks.
Yep. So, you know, those are areas that we will be looking at, and I, I note that they're- So, you know, those areas that we will be looking at, and I note that there are later on councils that are looking for more sidewalk expansions, and I agree, it's needed in a lot of areas. WCAT, that was some of the pandemic equipment that's done. The water truck, which we actually have to supplement, is completed. The conference room Zoom hybrid upgrades, those are in the testing phase, so they are a little bit, not complicated, but we need to do some training to get them work. We may end up buying some tables. I think some of us were at the Public Safety Building the other day, and I think maybe a better situated table and maybe some movable cameras will help a little bit. It was the feedback I got, and I thank Maureen and Ed for bringing that feedback back to me. Civil law monument evaluation, that's been all expended, and that was what that cost, and the title search of some of the tax titles that we've done. So total is, expended is a little over two point three million dollars, and right, and we have remaining two thousand and forty-eight.
Two million.
Little two million. I keep saying two thousand, be easier to expend, right? Little over two million dollars. Now, I'm going to pause right here and just let everybody think about this.
I was going to say, before we get to that, can we pause and just maybe see if there are any questions on?
Sure.
What's been allocated so far? And maybe just a question to start, Steve. So, you know, we're about a million and a half shy of what we approved.
That's been expended.
That's been expended?
Right.
Or appropriated. What is our confidence level of getting up to the full three point eight million?
I think extremely high.
Okay.
Extremely high.
So there's nothing that you would say we're at risk of not spending?
Well, energy, we're not going to hit the four hundred.
Other than energy.
Okay.
And you mean by, by the entire period of time or by this, end of this fiscal year?
So I mean, in terms, again, I'm going to hold on this for a second, but, you know, we've, again, obviously, we haven't spent all of the sidewalk money yet because the work has to be done, but we do expect that we are going to spend all of that, you know, in the period of time that we need to spend, meaning the larger deadline.
Yes, with the exception of the Energy Assistance Fund.
Okay, so that's the one thing that we feel we're at risk of not spending up to the full amount?
Correct.
Okay. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor DeBrowski?
I just have one comment about the Energy Assistance Fund. I know that, I've raised this before, we did set that up at a time when I think it was necessary, and I was fully supportive of it then. The state has, in essence, a parallel program, and we were actually using the state's guidelines to do our own. But ultimately, we can't lose sight of the fact that this was really, these ARPA dollars were to aid public health and economic recovery. And I think at this point, unassigning the approximate quarter million dollars from the Energy Fund and putting it back into the pot makes a lot of sense for many reasons, not the least of which, I think there are a number of other initiatives that are more in keeping with the intention of how these dollars are to be allocated. And I think we've helped a lot of people get through a rather difficult time, a lot of our residents. But at this point, the fact that we keep setting aside this quarter million dollars for something, I think we've made an impact of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on, how many households, Steve? You probably don't know offhand, but a good number.
Good number, yeah.
A good number. But at this point, I think it's, I think we should put that, those remaining dollars back into the pot and be reallocating them.
Thank you.
We've been through, sorry, we've been through two winters on that? I just want clarification.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I thought.
I agree with that.
And actually, the first winter was a little bit of a late start.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd actually appreciate, thank you, Chair. I actually appreciate the social worker Jason Stone coming and giving us an update on the program too, for like, because I would like to know the exact numbers and has there been more people this, you know, and how they're getting to him, because I feel like we've had anecdotal, but I don't think he's come to us this year. So I don't, I don't know when we're doing their budget, but maybe we can tie it into when we do Health and Human Services budget, have him come and talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, we can, whatever the council wants.
Any other, just before we come back to you, anyone else who hasn't spoken? Again, and if I'm missing you, please yell.
I do just have a question about the Energy Fund, and I think that Counselor Butt's suggestion is a good one, because I'd like to get some more information as well. But I do wonder is that when we're, when that money is expended and we're, if we end up going down to zero, then what happens? Do we just end it? And it's, that's something that I think that, you know, I know that the ARPA funds, we don't want to do something that's going to need to be continually, continually supported. So I think that that's something that we'd want to think about as well. But I'd be really interested in hearing from Jason about.
Chairman. Do they say this is a job? Chill.
Great, thank you, Counselor.
Wait, wait.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor DeBrowski?
I would just say that we have a commitment to, by end of '24, we have, we need to commit. It's, there's a question about expenditure by '26 as well, which I think needs to get factored into this. And I thought one of the premises that we had was that we were not going to use ARPA funds for anything that was more appropriate as a line item in a budget, because these are dollars that were defined and finite in terms of duration, so they weren't dollars that we were going to use as recurring, but instead one-offs to be able to, to meet whatever the objective might have been. And I, and I just think that the, the energy program has, has served its purpose, and the dollars should be put back into the pot as a result now. And we don't, even if we, we get a presentation, it won't change the fact that we can't predict what will be spent or not spent, you know, with that, whereas all the other things are tangible, where we can say, this is what we're, we're going to be spending, you know, for a given line item.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, either on this or the spending to date in total? Counselor McLean?
And just to confirm, Steve, the rail trail has not necessarily all been spent, but you think it's pretty much?
It's contracted.
The design work has pretty much been done?
Exactly, it's contracted, so I'm.
Right, I know it's contracted, but also it's made significant progress?
Yes.
In the contract?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be all ready for that tip whenever it shows up?
We, that's our plan, yes. We will be.
All righty.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Not that far off.
No, it's not.
We're talking about 2025 right now. All right, so I think as a follow-up here, I do agree with Counselor Butt. I would like to just get maybe sort of an opinion from Jason Stone and the department before we make a decision there, just because of, you know, while I'm sensitive to kind of the idea that, you know, this wasn't intended to be a permanent program, which was why we used ARPA funds, I would like to at least get some, you know, kind of color commentary from the folks that are dealing with this every day before we make a decision there. So Steve, if we could make sure that that's part of the.
Yeah.
Health Department budget discussion, that would be great. All right, and seeing no other discussion on the past, let's move ahead to the future, Steve.
Okay, so there have been some auditor, and I'm going to say slash federal rumblings, because I think there is a faction in Washington that would love to claw back any ARPA funds that aren't spent. And I have always been going under the assumption, based on what I've read and based on what I've talked to with other people, is as long as the monies are obligated or appropriated in some sense by the town council in Wakefield, by 123124, we're good as long as they're expended by 123126, okay? So recently, you know, we're audited all the time, every year they come in, Powers and Sullivan, which is now Markham, so you'll see Markham now when they come in. They are hearing rumblings that perhaps, you know, having the local body appropriated or obligated or designated is not enough, and it may need to be a contract signed. So that's something more for us to think about. I will tell you that myself, our Emergency Management Director, who has great connections in the federal level, and I was talking to Counselor Vincent about this today, because I think he shares my thoughts, it's hard to get a straight answer out of anybody over there, what that means. So I think we need to keep that in the back of our mind a little bit. A lot of things we can sign a contract for, but I would hate to have somebody from, you know, from Washington come in and say, you know, that fifty thousand dollars that we appropriated for whatever, you really didn't sign a contract, so we're looking to claw back everything we can. So I just want to keep that in mind as we go forward. So we did talk, and I think a lot of the councilor wanted, councilors wanted to talk about, where do we go from here with our two million dollars left? So what I did is I put everything that was given to me by all the councilors, and in the event that more than one counselor had the same item, I used the higher number, okay? I didn't, I didn't add them, I just used the higher number figuring that was probably better, better off as you'd see. So renovations to the senior center was discussed, one hundred thousand dollars. The Inspire Cafe has been discussed, one hundred and fifty thousand. Sidewalk extensions were discussed, two hundred and fifty. Albion Cultural Exchange, which would add an elevator, ADA, elevator to the second floor and basement and ADA, item seven hundred and fifty thousand. Pedestrian access to the lake, and we're talking more about the cemetery to the yacht club area, because the others we kind of have, you know, some areas in, one hundred and fifty thousand. Pollinator gardens, one hundred thousand. Solar panels for the Galvin School, and there was some backup information in the package about this, as well as there was some backup information on Inspire Cafe that I gave, was given a hundred thousand dollars. Adding money to the affordable housing trust, this was the higher of the two requests that I received. Wakefield Food Pantry for their operations, forty thousand dollars. Assessment of historic structures throughout the town, whether it's the Minuteman statue or whatever, not the Minuteman, the, I guess, the Spanish-American War statue, or whatever, twenty-five thousand. An additional track and turf field, which was a tier-two request by somebody, probably in the area of Sullivan Park, eight hundred thousand. Adding on to our fit court with an outdoor hockey rink, materials have gone way up there, one point one million dollars. Splash pad, which I would imagine would be somewhere around the lake, probably near the playground at the Lower Common, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that is based on one that was recently built at Lynch Park in Salem. So that's where we got that figure from. Talked a little bit about microtransit tonight, maybe a microtransit van, someone asked about microtransit, seventy-five thousand. Additional community garden, indoor pocket parts, parks, a hundred thousand. And this is what I call, and this was a lot of different items about adding and helping the business community, Wakefield Small Business Incubator Fund it was called, but this is a lot of things that were put on by a number of different councilors, one hundred and fifty thousand per business for sign facade and ADA improvements, and I think these numbers could move around in here. Where we wanted, one hundred and fifty thousand for business zero interest loans, supportive veteran-owned businesses, supportive business employing those with special needs, supportive nonprofit in connection to the local economy, supportive pop-ups and incubator businesses, supportive business consultants and digital commerce initiatives, supportive chamber-guided small business initiatives, support for grants as designed by the Economic Development Council. All totaled, I had a little over seven million dollars. So this is what I tried to compile everything, got a bunch of emails from everybody, and thank you very much for getting them into me. If I missed anything, please let me know, we'll add that up here now, but I think I kind of double-checked it and made sure I got everything, and I think the actual ARPA folder fell out in the backseat of my car, so I'm doing a lot of this by, by memory right now on this. So that's kind of where we are now. It's kind of like doing the first capital round of the Capital Expenditure Committee. So that's where we are. I don't know if the council wants to tackle any of these, or none of these, or just mull it and come back and we pare it down at a, at a future date.
Yeah, so I'm going to suggest two things before we open it up for discussion. One is, and this is going to be sort of my request of my colleagues, is I think it would be helpful perhaps if between now and our next meeting, we all go through this full list and rank order our choices and submit that to, to Mr. Mayo. I think just so we have some idea of, are there areas where we have broad consensus? Are there areas that, you know, because I'll be perfectly honest, on my list, I mean, I threw a lot in that I said, I'd love to do this, but this is, you know, pretty far down on my priority list. I suspect that we all sort of had a similar way of looking at things. And so, you know, I certainly want to have the discussion here, but I wonder if that might be a good way of trying to, you know, sort of focus on a couple of areas where we maybe want to have some more focused discussion. So that's, that's one request. The second request is, I might ask that we look at some of the smaller dollar items, and it does seem like we've got this sort of, kind of chasm between a hundred fifty thousand and two hundred fifty thousand, so maybe it's a hundred fifty below or a hundred below, whatever the number is. If there is anything in those sort of small items that is jumping out at people today that seem like no brainers, and I'll, again, I'll give you another example, twenty-five thousand dollars for assessment of historic structures, to me feels like that is money well-spent. We have, it's not a huge amount of money, we have a number of historic structures in town that probably could use some, some evaluation. That feels to me, just speaking as one person, that that might be sort of a no-brainer assessment, but I'd maybe like to ask people to kind of, you know, comment on if there are others, you know, again, that are on the smaller side, where, you know, there might be some kind of consensus tonight that we want to try to line in on. So with that context, let me open it up for questions, comments, and discussion. Counselor McLean?
Your first request is very easy for me, because I only made one request, so I can rank it. It's my one request.
But I guess the request is though to then rank beyond that, right? So like, I think what we want to try to get to is.
No, I'm just saying, from my perspective.
Understood.
As my request, I did a lot of work on it, I did a lot of specificity, and it's not a million, because I understand that there's only two point something million. Half a roof is better than none, so I have the Plan B already in there, which is the option two. So if you want to look at, you know, the spreadsheets and look at the estimates and look at the potential tax benefits of the town, if someone doesn't change it in the federal government between now and then, there's always a risk, but the payback period looks to me very good. The Galvin's been solar-ready for nine years. There isn't a rule of thumb in the industry that after a certain period of time, you know, your roof gets older, so you're less likely to do it. So there's an urgency to this, to me, and nothing has been done to date, so I thought it was a good idea. That's my, my one. On the smaller items, I'm just continuing to comment along with what you said. Yeah, the twenty-five seems like a no-brainer. I'd do the one fifty for, for the, for the Inspire tonight. I would personally, I'm not trying to get a majority on anything, I'm just saying that I would. But again, at the same time I say that, I think we do have to be a little careful, because the more the smaller ones we do, the more it impacts the remainder of what's left. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Danahue?
Hi, thank you. I would, I would urge all of us to vote to support the Inspire Cafe tonight, just because I know that there's time sensitivity on that, and we, they need to be able to secure their leasing to make those capital improvements. So the other items, I would say that we should maybe prioritize and then have a discussion, because, well, they're not as time-sensitive, and even though they're smaller items, they could impact allocation of resources to those larger items. But I am not saying that I'm against any of those at all, that I would like to be able to have a discussion about where we all see the prioritization of all of the items that we have together, with the exception of Inspire. I would urge all of us to vote on that tonight. And is now the time that I talk about, a little bit about what I support and why I support it to my fellow counselors while they're all here?
If you'd like to.
Okay. I would just say is that the, the piece for the low interest, for the no-interest loans and grants for local businesses to help with facade improvements, I think that that's one of the, one of the great needs that we have in terms of economic development for our town, is that I think that the way that our downtown looks is going to be a way that, the way that it looks is going to attract businesses to come here, and I think it's also going to put pressure on, other businesses are going to see what other, you know, other businesses making those improvements, and if we can support them, those who want to make those efforts, I think that we should do that. We've talked a lot about economic development, about, you know, new businesses coming to town, we talked about uniform signage, if we can get that all done, that's great, and speed accelerate that. So that would be my. So that would be my, that would be my request. The other thing is, is that I think that, never mind, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Other questions? Counselor Butt.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to, I love your idea of us kind of ranking and, and sending to Steve. A lot of these were newer to me because, you know, I did more than one idea, but not all of these. And I actually, this is the first time I'm actually seeing the Small Business Incubator Fund, and I adore that idea. Last week, last week now, Ed and I had the first economic council meeting. And, you know, a lot of these ideas were things that we talked about, and I think that is exactly kind of what I envisioned of our above kind of these one time things, but that would lead to other greater things. So I love that idea. It wouldn't have been an initial, on my initial list. So I think us ranking and kind of going through is helpful. And then I do think, Steve, on some of these, like, thank you for your presentation, but just a little bit more update, like, that outdoor hockey rink, we started talking about that two years ago. And so I just would love an update from Bill and, and Dan and Catherine to see, like, did we ever apply for any grants? Did we ever talk to the Bruins Foundation?
We tried. I don't think we're going to get much from the Bruins, but-
Okay. So like, you know, just, just to kind of talk a little bit more about specifics of, you know, expansion of fit court, sounds great, you know, the breakup, because outdoor hockey rink, I think, was even more than a million. So just a little bit more detail on some of these ideas. But yeah, I think the ranking and maybe us asking you follow up questions would be
Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I have a couple of observations and then a couple of comments about some of the projects. One, to me, I think it's important that Councilors Denahue and Smith-Galvin get an opportunity to participate in the allocation of these funds before their terms end on the council, since they've been on the council, since they have been part of the ARPA discussions all along. So I think getting this done by the end of April is important to me. I agree in part on the priority. The one where I draw a distinction is I look at these as to those that have a funding source and those that do not have a funding source. And there's numerous items on there that, for instance, because we're not a preservation community, Preservation Act community, don't have a funding source. And some councilors may not factor that in, in terms of the priorities. Is there a way, Steve, to list those that have a funding source, like they can go through capital planning, as opposed to have no source of funding, like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has no other source of funding because we're not a CPA community? I only had $315,000 in terms of requests. One of them actually was the historical structures. Because what I have seen is the $10,000 that we allocated to get the repair estimate for the Soldiers and Sailors Memorial. By the way, we got that money back because we got a $15,000 grant towards the overall cost of repair. But that, as Steve can attest to, is an extremely popular item in town, and that passed unanimously at the, at last spring's town meeting. We have numerous other structures that we do need to get repair estimates so then we can evaluate, can we get resources allocated towards them in the future to repair them? And these are things that if they're permanently destroyed, and I talked with Ann today, and some of the work that the specialists had to do on the figurines for that Soldiers and Sailors Memorial, if we had waited much longer, they would have been gone. They would have been permanently destroyed. The other one I had was, I actually differed. I didn't have $850,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust. I had $250,000 because it has $760,000 in it right now. I thought adding another $250,000 would give it just slightly over a million dollars. We now have a board of trustees. The board of trustees can actively be working on trying to help folks with renters assistance, closing costs, and exploring, you know-
Second mortgages.
Yes, second mortgages, and exploring housing possibilities. So I think getting the money in there, and that's important to me because if we have to spend it by December 2026, the earliest that we can get that money in there, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees can look into trying to spend that money.
Can I, can I just pause for a second on that, just to clarify? I'm assuming that if we allocate dollars to a trust fund, that that is considered spent for the purposes of our-
That's what we don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I don't-
Because it would be an illegal instrument that has its own authority.
Yeah, we don't have a definitive answer on that.
I would, I would agree with your assessment.
So I know we're working on this, but sorry, Counselor Vincent, but if we could nail that down, because that's a pretty important-
That's a big issue. Yeah.
Question. Sorry, Counselor.
That's okay. We've been talking, we've been exploring that from a legal standpoint for a while. And the third one I had on there was the food pantry. The $40,000 for the food pantry, similar to the discussions that we've had from residents as well as amongst ourselves about Inspire Cafe. The food pantry over the last three years has seen a, almost 25% decrease in terms of their number of donations, from 462,000 in FY21 to 349,000 in FY23. But the cost of food during that period of time has risen by 165%. The $40,000 is because they're looking to hire a development director as a part-time position, whose main emphasis is going to be on fundraising efforts. Because of the problem now with the decrease in donations, there were a lot of donations during COVID, that significantly has decreased, and the operating costs have significantly increased. And I think that by, by helping them with $40,000 to hire that development director is a one-shot deal. And it clearly, ARPA is supposed to be used for public health emphasis, and the work that they do in helping citizens in our community certainly enhances the public health. They don't need that long term. I'm hopeful that the director, once he or she is in place, will be able to, to put in, in place those fundraising efforts to let them help sustain themselves and get more in terms of donations and therefore be able to operate. Because last year, they served 575 families. And they serve everybody in this town, and then I'll conclude, you know, 25% of their recipients were seniors, 21% were families with children. In fact, there was a total of 264 children. 57% were single person households and 30% were disabled individuals. So this is something, I think, it's a small dollar figure. This is something that can help them right now because they're in the process of interviewing for this position. And they, as you all know, they provide an invaluable service to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion? Counselor Dubrowski.
I just want to, again, just underscore that the National Conference of State Legislatures and multiple other sources have identified, identified at the time, quote, "President Biden signed the 1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan Act, the latest federal stimulus bill to aid public health and economic recovery." And I really think we can't lose sight of that. I've had the opportunity to speak many times with Aaron Kokinda, and I was, I have spoken a number of times with our Chamber as well, our Chamber of Commerce. And they have so many programs that are in place that don't have the funding to be able to execute on. John Smolinski from the Chamber specifically was giving me examples of ways in which during the pandemic, in sense, when they have the resources available, they've been able to have really economic stimulus programs that have directly benefited our local restaurants and other shops and the like. He also said that, you know, the idea of this, having like an incubator, in the sense that oftentimes businesses will come into town, they'll get the permitting, and not have a business plan in place. And he said that the opportunity, so he fully supports, you know, the request for, for the million for these purposes. But he said that, you know, so often businesses then realize that they're either locating in the wrong part of town, because maybe they need parking and where they are isn't really parking friendly, or they know that their, their customer or client base is, is somewhere specific and they're not really, you know, convenient to them. And he said he was amazed at how many businesses could really benefit from outside services to help them develop a business, better develop a business, business plan in advance to, and then also the issues that they often run into from a technology standpoint, not having a robust website, not having an e-commerce component to their business, things like that. These are local businesses, you know, right here within our own town. And there are so many other, we are in such a highly competitive, you know, hyper competitive region. And the idea that we're trying to sharpen our elbows against Melrose or Redding or Stonem, that's real. Aaron Kokinda can speak to how many people, and Steve, I know you've met a bunch of them too, who are looking at Wakefield and then looking elsewhere and saying, well, what are you guys offering compared to the other communities? A lot of other communities have packages, if you will, that entice new businesses to come in. That's a part of this, certainly, but also supporting the existing businesses, I think, is a really important piece, too. So I feel really strongly that just conceptually, economic recovery and economic development are key. And they, the, the allocation of those dollars will, you know, provide dividends and benefits many times over, I think ultimately. And it's, there's direct impact there, measurable impact. And as I said, a lot of these programs have already been established, and it's a matter of being able to fund them further. Aaron said I ran out of funding, so I couldn't do any more of the signed programs you'd had. John Smolinski was talking about a couple of the programs. And the idea of having a match, too, I think is important so that the, the businesses also have an investment in there. And we can't be landlord averse either because, to Counselor Danahue's point, having, you know, we're doing so much with the envisioned project of improving the public ways and public spaces, but we can do nothing with the facades. That's private property. We can incentivize, but we can't, we can't do anything otherwise. This would allow for that. So I'm really comfortable with the idea of, of, you know, incentivizing those business owners to improve the aesthetic of our community. And we talked at, at the Economic Development Council, there's a lot of, I think, similarity of thought, you know, this idea of kind of creating squares, if you will, and, you know, thinking about different areas around town where there, there's, they can be business centric, not just the downtown, but each having kind of their own identity. But we have so much opportunity, and we're going to be having such a significant state investments in our public ways infrastructure. And I think we should have the facade and sign, you know, complement to that, to really get the most bang for our buck, because that's a benefit to all of our residents, too. So I think that's a really important consideration here. I would, I would be reluctant to do much in the way of anything aside from the Inspire request tonight, to Counselor Danahue's point, that is very time sensitive, I recognize. And I know, like, a lot of small amounts can add up to large amounts. And I'd like to see where we are with this home heating and if that's in the mix, because I want to see what the total pot is we're dealing with. So I think it's reasonable. I feel, I feel rather passionately about the Inspire Cafe piece of things. I think it's, it's a worthwhile program. It has a significant economic component to it. It deals with employability. It deals with the employability of our, of our most unemployed population, as you heard. But it also will end up creating an economic driver downtown sooner rather than later, which will benefit all the surrounding businesses as well. So, you know, for that reason, I would, I would request, and I don't know where we are with motions, but I would make a motion that we at least approve the Inspire Cafe request of 150,000 this evening. Table everything else, prioritize and rank it, have a better understanding of what our full pot is, and then do the allocations.
I asked you to hold on your motion for a second. Actually, did I ask you to hold on for a second just until we hear from other councilors?
Sure.
So that if there are other things that we-
I parked my motion for the moment, yes.
Park it in the spot.
I parked it downtown because now that we have parking enforcement, we always have parking spaces.
There you go. Counselor Smith-Galvin, but we'll come back to that.
I really appreciate what everybody said, and it's going to be hard to rank these. There are some ideas that I hadn't really considered seriously. I, to Counselor Dubrowski's point on the public health and economic development, I definitely think that the incubator is a good idea. I think we need to see what's worked. I know there has been a facade problem, program, I think, through the savings bank that has kind of had mixed. So I just want to look, make sure we look and see what's already worked. But I really am in favor of the renovations to the senior center and the Albion Cultural Exchange. You know, one of the outcomes of COVID has been loneliness, and there's a big article in Yesterday's Globe on it. And I just think better utilization of the senior center, not just for our senior population, but make it a multi-generational, there's a stage there that I think is going to be needed in town. You know, I think there are people looking for stages as different churches, you know, sometimes they don't want to be in a church, or sometimes it's not always available in the smaller stages. And in Albion Cultural Exchange, we've already seen what an amazing building that can be when utilized correctly. And to be able to have it ADA accessible, especially if we have an Inspire Cafe right down the road, right? Like, like, think of the downtown and having that building be entirely accessible with lofts upstairs and just fully utilized. So those are tough capital. They're, they're not always, probably not going to be at the top of our capital budget in the next decade. And so this is kind of a generational opportunity to make those improvements to buildings that hopefully could last, you know, for generations.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have a few thoughts as well, but, oh, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Chair Jones. If you don't mind, Counselor Dubrowski, Counselor Denahue was the person that, of all the council members, was the person that really worked behind the scenes on Inspire Cafe. And are you still on, Counselor Denahue?
I am.
I would wonder if you would let her do the motion on Inspire Cafe.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm going to ask us to hold on for a second, though.
If we do.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor McLean.
Yeah, it's the second time, is that okay?
Sure. I think, has everyone else had a chance to speak?
Yeah. Just from my perspective, I did want to point out one thing pursuant to what Counselor Dubrowski is saying. Because I had asked Steve, you know, what, over a year ago, probably, you know, what can we use this money for? I just wanted to be clear that whatever the act was, that we have total discretion with what we spend this money on. That's just the A point. It's not that it gets your idea.
It's any legitimate government purchase.
Any legitimate government purchase.
We could not fund-
Right.
Existing bonds, we could not fund pension funds and things like that.
And my second point would just be that, you know, we will have to, some hashing to go about because I do think that some of the projects Counselor Smith-Galvin mentioned should go through a capital planning. So that's just me personally, my own personal opinion, so we'll have to hash all this out.
Thank you. Well, just a couple of my own thoughts before we get to, you know, any, any motions. First of all, I just, I, I look at this list and I'm really excited. I mean, there are some great ideas on here, you know, things that, you know, like the, the Business Incubation Fund that I was really happy to work on and I'm really excited about, things that quite frankly had never crossed my mind, that, you know, as I look at the list now, sort of take precedence over some of the things that, that I had put on my list. And so I am really energized by what's here and appreciate everyone's time and effort that went into this. You know, as I think about the things that, you know, are priorities for me, I think there are three tonight that honestly I would be comfortable moving ahead with, the Inspire Cafe, the Wakefield Food Pantry, and the, the Historic Monument Assessment. Again, relatively small dollar things, and there's urgency on all of those things. And so, you know, those are three that I personally would be comfortable if we moved ahead with those. A couple of other things that are important to me, again, the Small Business Incubation Fund, I think is a really exciting opportunity and a differentiator for our community. And so that's something that I would certainly support. I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Smith-Galvin around the renovations to the senior center and the Albion Building, particularly the senior center, because we already have an elevator there. And so $400,000 to activate that space feels like very, very short money for me compared to the, the benefit that we'd get from that. I'm also excited about solar panels for the Galvin, and I would say I'm so excited about that prospect that even if we didn't have ARPA funding, I would suggest that we look at moving ahead with that as a, as a warrant article at perhaps the fall town meeting, because I think there is an ROI there, a return on investment in terms of what we'd spend. That would save us money over the long term. And so even in a world where ARPA didn't exist, that would be something that I would, I would want to move ahead. But again, a lot of other ideas here that I look forward to thinking about and seeing other folks' thoughts on. So with that said, let's take a moment to see if there are any motions that individuals want to bring. And I suspect Counselor Danahue, you may have one.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we fund through ARPA funds $150,000 for capital improvements for Inspire Cafe.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
And I just want to say thank you. This is something that is really important to me, is that I think it's going to make such a difference. And so, thank you, Counselor Dubrowski, for allowing me to make the motion that you started thinking. So I appreciate it. It's just a very important, near and dear to my heart.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dubrowski?
I.
And myself, yes. Counsel Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Motion carries seven zero. And congratulations to the board of, the friends, I should say, the friends of Inspire Cafe. Look forward to seeing that open, and seeing it open for the next 10 years. That's really exciting. Do we have any other motions that councilors want to lay on the table? Counsel Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Johns. I move to allocate $40,000 for the Wakefield Food Pantry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Dombrowski?
I'm certainly not opposed to it, but I do think we should just reserve that in the context of a broader discussion when we go through all these items. I think it makes sense. I'd also like to see where that falls in the priority lists for other people, too. So I don't think that there's any harm in waiting until we have the broader discussion on that.
Other comments, comments or questions? Counsel Smith-Galvin?
I guess what is your thinking in terms of timing on this? Is this the next meeting, or is this two months?
I would like to look at the prioritized list at the next meeting, because again, I, I think Counsel Vincent's point about, A, doing this sooner, given the work Counsel Smith-Galvin and Counsel Danahy that you've put into it, but also B, you know, time is getting short. And we do have to, not only do we have to make the votes to allocate dollars, but we also have to make sure the dollars get transferred to the things that we will spend them on before the end of the year. So I, you know, this is something that I'd like to see us come to consensus on relatively quickly.
Could I just ask, and Counsel Mr., would you be fine just waiting the two weeks then for that?
If it's two weeks from now, sure.
I mean, it's sort of up to you as the maker of the motion. This will, this will be on our agenda in two weeks.
Well, I don't know if I can count to four, so I'll wait two weeks. Okay.
Counsel?
Thank you, Chair Johns. My other motion, I move to allocate $25,000 for historicals. It's not up on the board, I can't.
Sorry, just for a second. So for the food pantry motion, are you withdrawing that for today?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'll withdraw that motion.
Thank you. All right, and go ahead with your, your next motion.
So I move to allocate $25,000 for historical structures, repair estimates.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
See?
I would just raise the same issue again, not at all opposed to it, I would just have a broader context discussion.
Other comments, Counsel Vincent?
Yeah, this time I'm going to go forward.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from other councilors?
To your left.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Sorry, so, so, no, that's okay. So like I, like I said, you know, I, I'm intrigued by the small, for this, what it's being called here, Business, Wakefield Small Business Incubator Fund. One of the bullets talks about nonprofit. We were very deliberate when we created Erin Kekinda's job about the economic and community. And so I just, I wonder if we highlight that this would be community, because there is a way of food pantry and Inspire and things like that, or food pantry, I guess, more falling into this also. And so let's just think about that, right? That it's not only small businesses, that it could be community, nonprofit, as is mentioned there. So I just, I don't want to lose that, because it could fall under this, right? If, if, like, I know I didn't create this idea, but I would think that if we create this, the food pantry does help our town generate jobs, right? It is kind of a nonprofit that does all that. So I don't know if the, if it's a community, you know, economic incubator fund or something, just, or just an incubator fund and not just small business, because I think you're losing the nonprofit aspect of it.
So just one comment on that. I think that is potentially, I think that is correct when we talk about a nonprofit like the food pantry. I think for Counsel Vincent's motion, where we're talking about town-owned assets, I don't think that would fall within the scope of the incubator fund.
Yep.
So I think-
No.
Qualify, yes.
Yes, I'm not talking about that.
Okay.
I'm talking about the food pantry, and I think if Inspire had more time, I actually, this is like exactly what we would want to. Inspire is exactly what we wanted to fund out of this, but because of the timeline, you know, we did it separately. So I do, I think it's small business, community, you know, community groups, or non, I even say nonprofits, NGOs, but no, not, not government affiliated.
All right. Other, other questions or comments on Counsel Vincent's motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Counsel Danahy?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Smith-Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel McLean?
Aye.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Motion carries seven zero. All right, so for next time, I think our, our homework assignment is to reach out to Mr. Mayo with your rankings of the lists that is available in the packet, obviously absent Inspire and the, the monument assessment item. And we'll bring that to the-
I'd love to get them by the end of the week.
Yep.
No, tomorrow's not, not, no, not tomorrow. The end of the week, weekend would be great. By Monday, by Monday morning, let's do that.
And so we'll share that, and I think we can share the rankings for each counselor in the packet next time, so that's available for all of us to look at.
I'll do an overall ranking and share it.
Perfect. Yeah, we'll use that to frame out the discussion for next time. So thank you, everyone, for this one.
Thank you.
This has been a really, I think, a really good and productive discussion, and I, I think we continue to be really at the forefront in terms of how communities are thoughtfully allocating some of these funds, and I think that's something we should be really proud of. All right, so continuing then, item 10C, Town Elections and Other Townwide Events. Mr. Mayo, do you want to kick this off right now? Counsel Dombrowski, you raised this as well as an, as an item, so I defer to one of you to-
Sure. You know, we've been, or my office has been discussing, you know, when there are town elections, trying to work with the school department regarding the issue of parking at the Galvin School. And, you know, the school department has been great about, about creating non-student days, professional development days. However, that really doesn't help us in allowing people to get easily to the polls if there are events, professional development events, or where parking teachers or other people are parking at the high, at the junior high Galvin, and voters can't get there. Now, I know that I went to vote, and it was around noon time, and I had trouble finding a spot. So I parked illegally, because I'm not really worried about getting towed in Wakefield, but, but it wasn't right, right? It wasn't right. And we did hear from some people that, geez, it was hard for them to get to park, they had to park way down the street, I thought there was going to be school today. So I think, I think what, so Ed contacted us, and I think he's, what he's really looking for is some kind of a policy to make sure that, you know, when there are events at the, at the Galvin, because it's a great space, and we did a great job as a community designing that space, where you have an academic area, you have the public area where it can be used. It's very easy, once you get there, to get in and vote, one spot. Betsy does a great job with the election, but Betsy cannot control the parking, and if people can't park, there is an issue. And, you know, we've had that at a few elections where people have become, I don't know, dismayed and didn't vote, because they couldn't find a space, particularly people that maybe have a trouble walking large distances. So I think Ed, I'm stealing Ed's thunder, he wanted us on the agenda, so I'll turn it over to him.
Well, I'll just say that I did commiserate with Steve about this issue, and it was an issue this la, this most recent time. The Galvin, it, it's a town asset, it's, it's part of our portfolio, and it makes no sense to have all of these accommodations where we don't have children that are being educated on that day, but then not be able to utilize it as, as we intend for that day. I heard from a number of people, I myself drove around the parking lot, so I was there around 10-ish or thereabouts. I myself drove around the parking lot several times before I could find a space. When I spoke with Steve, I know, I think you said you drove around five times-
Yeah.
-and then parked illegally.
Yeah.
I, I had resident, I did not park illegally, by the way. I'll just have you now. I, but I did, I, I talked to voters that were coming out of the polls, and a couple stopped me and said, you know, what's up with this parking? It's so difficult. There is no way that the number of vehicles matched the number of people that were inside voting. That was clear. So the, the vehicles were not voters, you know, primarily. There were just too many cars for that to be the case. And, you know, I heard anecdolia story about one, a woman who had rushed over, like, on her break from work, and was trying to go in and vote, and had a real difficult time doing it. I guess she ended up ultimately making it in to vote, but the next time that happens, do you think she's going to say, oh, I'm going to, you know, go over and just pop in to vote? We need to make voting as easy as possible, and I feel like we're disenfranchising a lot of potential voters, because like, oh, I don't want to deal with the hassle of that parking, you know, it was too much. It was, it was in climate weather, too, which I saw some older folks that were having challenge, and even the handicap area, the elderly area, that was pretty full. And so I think the, and I, I think we, we could have potentially similar issues, if we have conflicts with town meeting, which is another, you know, the town-focused event. So I think we should think about some sort of a general policy in terms of utilization of that building for these limited instances where the town needs to have the priority of the parking. And it allows then for clear transparency, that the school department can plan around it, certainly. I know in the past, they had a shuttle, for instance, a shuttle service, they used satellite parking shuttle for that, for one day of voting. But we have, we have the primaries coming up, we have, we have the town election coming up, then we have the primaries, then we have the presidential. And so there's a lot of opportunities, you know, going forward, where I think it's important that we make sure that we make it as easy as people to get to the, to the polls. And so we're obviously not going to create a policy tonight, but I do think it's important that we do craft one. It doesn't have to be overly complex, but craft a policy that makes clear that there have to be other accommodations made to ensure that the primary purpose of when that building is being utilized by the town is able to be achieved. And that doesn't just mean the gymnasium is available, it means that the parking, you know, that corresponds with it is equally available. Because it's a real problem, I mean, it, it creates issues.
Thank you, Counsel Butt.
I, you know, I don't agree, I think, I mean, I don't disagree, I think we can come up with a policy, we can talk to, be more intentional about talking to the schools, because they have teacher training there, and I know there are talk about them parking somewhere else. I do also just want to highlight that we have early voting and voting by mail that lots of people take up. I voted by mail, I didn't have to go down there on that day. And also, we just passed a bike and ped plan, and so hopefully more people will walk and bike if the weather is nice to get there. And so we should, we should make sure the sidewalks are safe to getting there and, you know, set up some biking. I don't know if we have bike-
There's some good bike racks, actually.
Great, so we should, we should highlight that as an option, too. But I think it's a, it's a worthy conversation to have, especially when we have a lot of big events, even if you go on the weekends, if the soccer, if there's an event at the middle school auditorium and the soccer fields are being used, I mean, it is. So, you know, maybe some signage about other places to go and park, also our campaign of getting people to walk and bike more. But, yeah, it's something to explore, but also just wanted to mention there are other ways to vote, too.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Counsel Smith-Galvin?
Do you think the problem on Tuesday was teachers? Is that, is that pretty much the determination?
I think there were, was professional development.
Not the teachers are a problem, but the professional development.
The professional development, and I think it might have been from other schools there, too. So, I think, yeah.
So, so one thing, I think there's a policy question, but we also do have a local election coming up-
Right.
-fairly quickly, and I don't know that we're going to have a policy in place for that. I, I do know that that day, Town Election Day, April 23rd, is not a professional development day for the schools. And so I think one thing, Mr. Mayo, I would ask if you could work with the clerk's office and the superintendent and the principal, just to make sure that we have a plan for, for that day. We know that kind of drop-off and pickup, you know, drop-off in particular is going to be a really challenging time that day. And I don't know that we can kind of avoid that entirely for that, that kind of short window between, you know, 7:30 and 8:00. But, you know, it is important, I think, to make sure that we have access to the building for the rest of the day. So, you know, even prior to any policy being worked on, I think if, if you could work with, again, Betsy and, and Dr. Lyons, to make sure that we've got a plan there, I think that would be great. Counselor Danahy, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I would just say that, you know, reminding people that there are other ways to vote, great encouraging, biking, walking, all of that. But at the end, I think the most important thing is that we do anything in our power to increase voter turnout. And I think that that is the ultimate goal. So I think that there, I think the fact that there was an issue with the teachers' parking or professional development, I, I do think that that is a major, it was a major problem. We need to rectify that so that we make it easy for people to vote. You know, the way it rates, people don't like to come out to vote, so we don't want to put any barriers, we don't want any barriers in place.
Any other discussion? So I think, continuing with our homework theme, so I think plan for April 23rd, and then, Mr. Mayo, I think if we could ask you to kind of come back-
Sure.
-when you are ready, maybe with some thoughts on what a policy might look like, so that we can have a more formative discussion.
Will do.
That'd be great. All right, thank you. Item number 11, donations. 11A, we have donations to the library in the amount of $913.28. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take, actually, any objections to accepting the donations as presented? Seeing none, donation to the library is accepted with thanks. We have donations in the amount of $150 to the council on aging. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion or any objection? All right, seeing no objection, donation is accepted. Item number 12, approval of minutes for the February 26th, 2024 Town Council Meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion or objections? Nope, seeing no objections, meeting minutes are approved. Item number 13, announcements. Counsel Dombrowski?
I just wanted to quickly mention that there was reference to the Economic Development Council that met for the first time last week. I think it was a really productive meeting, some really great ideas. I was, I was very encouraged by the, the mix of the group. It was, you know, lifelong residents and new arrivals, if, if you will. It was a great diversity of age, professional experience, really great ideas, and I think that there's a lot of great work that'll end up being done as a result. So I thank this council for, you know, putting that into place, because I think it will significantly benefit our, our business community.
Well, thank you to you and Counsel Butt for being our liaisons to that committee. And I, I will say, I agree, it's such a great mix of talent, and I certainly hope that everyone on that committee feels empowered to, to contribute and sort of drive the agenda going forward, because we, we wanted to gather these people for a reason, and we want to take advantage of their knowledge.
There will be a lot of ideas, I suspect, Counsel Butt, you might agree, in the coming months, I suspect there will be a lot of suggestions and ideas coming out of this council.
Great, thank you. Other announcements, Counsel Smith-Galvin?
Just quickly, tomorrow at the Americow, the Room to Write is doing a youth literacy event, and they have 100 books to give away and 12 local authors talking with students about writing and picture books, and it's going to be a great opportunity, it's from And it's going to be a great opportunity, it's from 6:00 to 8:00 at the AmeriCal.
Thank you. Counsel McLean?
There will be tomorrow at Maine and Albion, I believe at 6:30, Steve?
6:30, yep.
PM, a remembrance of our chief's father who passed away in a tragic fire 50 years ago when he was 10 years old. So, all are welcome to attend.
Thank you. Counsel Butt?
Just a couple of announcements. One, wanted to congratulate the Human Rights Commission on a great Women's History Month event with Counsel Julie Smith Galvin being one of the panelists. It was a really great event, annual, I think it was its fourth or fifth year, sixth year? I can't remember anymore, but it was a great event. So thank you for everyone that helped coordinate at that. Just two other reminders, the Wakefield Educational Fund has their annual spelling bee on Friday. They still have some tables available so your team can sign up. It's a great fundraising event. Jonathan and my team will try to redeem our first-place status that we lost last year by one point.
One point.
One point. And then, as we earlier heard from the DPW about recycling and sustainability, State Rep Kate Lippergare Beating is having her third annual recycling and sustainability event on April 6th, 10-1 at the high school. There's more information on our website, but if you have mattresses or TVs or furniture, it's this great event of getting things out of your house and donate it or recycled in a sustainable fashion. So go read up on that, and we'll see you there.
Thank you. Just a couple of things from me, just to mention. First, I want to highlight and also sort of congratulate and thank the Permanent Building Committee and the School Building Committee. We submitted last week the 90% design documents for the high school building project. To give you an idea as to what these documents are, it is about 3,000 pages of like detailed, detailed architectural and engineering renderings, incredibly thorough, detailed timelines and project plans for the whole project. It really is what gets you from the design concepts that we talked about when we approved the school last year to something that we can start building. And so that's an incredible accomplishment, and congratulate and thank everyone for the hard work on that. I, I do also want to mention, we did get our latest budget estimates for the project, which show us running about $1 million below the amount that we approved when we approved the building project. So good news. Obviously, we still have a long way to go, but, you know, definitely better to be in that position than in the others. I mentioned, just to remind my colleagues on the council, our performance review process for the town administrator is underway, so ask everyone to please complete their individual evaluations of, of Mr. Mayo and return those to me by April 1st so we can compile our, our board's evaluation. And then we will be presenting that and as part of our public meeting on April 22nd. And then finally, just a reminder, I'll be having office hours next Thursday, the 21st, at 7:00 on Facebook Live. So please tune in and join me and ask away with any questions or comments you have. And Counsel Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines.
I'll let you close us out. Well, just announcements.
I asked the chair if I could make an announcement, since it's, it's very personal. So 17 years ago today, my wife Tracy suffered a debilitating stroke. At this hour that evening, I was at Georgetown University Hospital in Washington, DC, as neurologists told me that they were unsure if she would survive that night. She was unconscious for three days. Displaying impressive courage, determination and resolve, she has spent the past 17 years on the road to recovery, overcoming partial paralysis, partial blindness, and cognitive disabilities, including aphasia. So I'll end my announcement tonight by just holding up to the camera. She's asleep now, but she'll see this tomorrow. A personal note that I wanted to leave to my wife Tracy. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Counsel Vincent. And I, I know, we all, we all know, all of us on the council know and love Tracy, and I, I think we're all touched by your tribute and amazed by her courage and, and, you know, everything that she's done over the years to, to recover from that. So thank you for sharing that. Item number 14, do we have any matters not anticipated for the agenda? All right. Seeing none, item number 15 is adjournment. Our next council meeting will be two weeks from tonight, Monday, March 25th, at 7:00 PM. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion or objection? I'm going to assume none. Thank you very much for joining us. This has been a, a long meeting, but certainly one where we got through a lot. So we will adjourn now at 10:35 PM. Have a great evening, everyone, and again, thank you for joining us. Good night.